I now declare the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is reconvened and open session, that all council members are present. Our first item on the preliminary agenda is consideration in action resulting in the executive session. Our next item is legislative update. Andrew Fortune.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Andrew Fortune, Director of Policy and Government Relations. There we are. All right, well, I'll try to be swift, and I know there may be some questions, so happy to answer them as we go along, or at the end, whatever you prefer. I wanted to remind everyone, it's been a little bit since redistricting, but we do have some new members within our delegation. As you can see on the screen, we have Brent Higginboo is a new addition, as well as Katrina Pearson and Mitch Little within our delegation. So a status update, we have had 8,901 bills filed this session. A little over 2,400 are city-related, and out of those, a little over 1,800 are what the City of Plano and our department is tracking. A special thanks to all of the department heads and staff, as they've been assisting us through that process with our management system, to keep a hold on all of those bills. Out of those, we have eight, what we're calling priority bills. Before we passed our legislative agenda, we brought these issues up to this council. Y'all moved forward and gave staff direction for these priorities, maintaining local control, the DART issue, qualified hotel projects, and the PFC, and at that time, growing HFC issue that we had. And so we got to work. We have a DART reform bill that looks at restructuring the finance. We have a companion in both the Senate and the House. Dart Governance Bill, which really wasn't one that we pursued, rather, it was one that was filed at the will of a senator, but we have supported it. A Qualified Hotel Projects Bill, we have both vehicles filed in either chamber. Project Financing Zone, for some of those on the council who may not be familiar with that, it is another similar hotel tool that would provide the city with a three-mile zone. Within that zone, if you think of it almost like a TIF or a TIRS, the state's portion of the hotel tax revenue would be, any increment for 30 years would be moved to an account for the city to access to help that particular project. So large cities, large convention centers, Dallas, Houston, San Antonio, et cetera, have utilized that tool. Similarly, you have to be included in statute specifically. And then housing finance reform, while these are not bills that we filed, we've certainly been supportive as they are moving through the process, this closes the loophole for foreign HFCs. So the similar PFC issue that we had, closing that loophole for HFCs. So jumping into it, we did offer up a committee substitute. So we heard from the council of what you all were hoping to accomplish with DART. We took it back to the great legal minds with our department here and others, and asked, what is legally feasible? And so we put together a committee substitute that was heard last week. If y'all were listening, we went to well into the next morning with that testimony. But in short, it restricts future debt issuances to three-quarters cent pledged. They can still issue debt, but it's more restrained. It enshrines the 25% rebate program. So rather than cutting the one cent sales tax, it provides an option for cities who are upside down like us, as the EY report had stated, to claw some of that money back to address mobility needs within our community. Fast-tracks the repayment of existing debt. And if a city were to call an election, which the city and this council has not discussed, DART must cease issuing new debt attributable to the city until that election, really till the taxpayers have made their voice heard. So DART can't run up that number until the citizens have had an opportunity to make a decision. And again, doesn't cut the one cent sales tax, and it does not negatively impact existing bond shareholders. There were concerns with the original filed version that it might. We've resolved those. Just more on that bill, we did start with Chairman Shaheen, one of our representatives, as the author. We since then had Chairman Meyer, Chairman Patterson, and former Chair of the Transportation Committee, also a Democrat, notably Terry Canales, join as authors. We did have the hearing, and they're laid out of the next steps. We're anticipating, hopefully, that we'll be voted out of committee this week, and we'll move through the House as quickly as possible, and then on over to the Senate to repeat the process, and ideally get to the governor. So that's a lot of information in a short amount of time. What questions can I answer for you on the DART reform bill?
Andrew, since I'm a legislative nerd, in addition to other types of nerd, and since this is my last meeting, I've said it before, but I have to reiterate that I have really enjoyed working with you on legislative matters, particularly this DART bill, which I've been pursuing for more than five years. And I really, really appreciate the diligence with which you've carried out this council's will. And I'm still going to be in the legislature, so I will see you around, but your efforts are greatly appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
What he said. So, Andrew, I really do appreciate it. I think Shelby and I are the only two that came in at the same time, and he's leaving me. But when we both came in, I think the first thing we noticed was how the service of DART is not really doing what is in the best interest of Plano, and that we really wanted some reform. And I appreciate the fact that you took that, balled and ran with it, to the point where we're actually getting some movement. And we really do appreciate that, and I think all of us are on the same page when it comes to supporting you and appreciate what you have done. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to second what Councilmember Williams and Mayor Protem Two said. I will miss working with you. You're excellent, Andrew. Thank you so much for your hard work. You rock, and there's smart brevity. I finally caught on to it.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. So moving right along through the presentation, Qualified Hotel Projects. As a refresher for this group, it is a state tool that we have to be authorized by statute to access. It does provide options for us to receive some of the state's portion of the taxes, on the hot tax, as well as the sales tax and local mixed beverage tax. Currently, we could be eligible for multiple projects. There is a question now that we have had it heard in both the Senate and the House as to the thousand-foot zone that would capture retail potentially around the site. It's likely that that may be removed from the final version of the bill. We're still working on it, still pleading our case, and we're going to do all that we can to be included with the other cities of our size for that. If that is taken out, we would still have access to the 6% levied on the hotel in the convention center area in terms of sales tax. And again, just on that bill, Representative Chairman Leach and Senator Paxton were our joint authors. We had the hearings, and those are the next steps. They're voting it out of committee, placing on calendars, and moving forward. Yep. And then finally, the foreign-owned land bill, SB 17, Mayor Protem Two has brought this up a few times in council. I wanted to provide an update. Senator Colcorse has received a lot of input on this bill that's had an impact. In short, the current version of the bill would allow, or would prohibit, rather, foreign-owned companies tied to certain adversarial governments, so at this time, that's China, Russia, North Korea, Iran, from acquiring property in Texas. It does not prohibit citizens or foreign nationals, say, with a green card, from purchasing homes, businesses, et cetera. And then, of course, countries that are not on that federal list of adversarial governments can still purchase property. It has been voted out of the Senate and reported favorably out of the House Committee. The next step would be for it to go to the full House to be considered and sent to the governor. And then finally, just a summary of the upcoming dates. It'll be a busy month, a lot of work still to be done, but I'm happy to answer any other questions about the process. I do want to brag on our staff. I went a little too fast. I was going to have Stephen Tanner on our staff, present a little bit more about the hotel project, but he has been fantastic through this process. I cannot be in multiple committees at one time, and we really appreciate your support of the department and certainly of our staff.
Mayor and Council, I'll just add that, you know, working down in Austin in the legislative process can be a contentious process, a very detailed process, and a very time-consuming process. So this might be the last time we see Andrew until June 3 of 2025, with the way the schedule's going. It's been an active legislative session for Plano, working a number of bills, not only trying to pass some bills, but also trying to defeat bills that might be harmful to Plano. And both Stephen and Andrew have done an outstanding job, including some 23-hour days trying to stay up and get everything done. So much appreciated for their effort, and appreciate your comments towards them.
Anthony?
I was just going to amend my thank you to include the excellent Stephen Tanner. You rock as well.
Yeah, we love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Neighborhood Traffic Management Program Discussion. Caleb?
Yes, Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering and Smart Brevity. I did like that. So I've got a few updates on the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, just a refresher of where we were at. So this really came out of the 2023 City Street Design Standards Update. This is a program we've had for a number of years. Back in about 2009, I believe, the program was suspended due to financial constraints. When we updated the street design standards, we included tools with our program, and then it also, in that street design standards, had a priority ranking system. And what we asked is for a consultant to come on board to get the program up and going again. And we brought that action to, or for consideration to council in August of last summer, and we were told just to hold for now because, again, because of financial constraints. A couple of the tools that we've added, we've just wanted to show you some examples. You'll see in the lower left, the speed humps, which you do see in and around town, the raised table crosswalk on your right. We're actually going to be doing that over here on 15th Street. So just some different tools that we put in there for neighborhood traffic management. And the majority of the comments, and I've got a map here at the end, the majority of the comments we get, speeding and cut-through traffic. That's 99.9% of the comments we get. So from evaluation criteria, we have a number of items that we will collect based on the complaint or the concern brought by a citizen. Average daily traffic, neighborhood support will ask for a petition, and these will be done all in the evaluation process, and before we do any improvements or even start design, we will follow this criteria. This is what the consultant will be brought on to assist us. We have them collecting traffic speeds, collecting traffic volumes, and then at the very end of it, being able to give us a recommendation of what tool in the toolbox most fits here, if there is a tool. We may do an evaluation and say, at this point, we don't see the need for any improvements in this area. But that's where that criteria will help us select that. So a couple weeks ago, I had a meeting with city management and a couple of council members asked us to revisit this. And so what we did is we went back to the consultant and looked at them in revising their scope. The original scope was for two years, and so we told them to cut that in half. There's a couple reasons why it was two years. One, we are at a point right now, we have a lot of traffic or transportation technology projects ongoing, so capacity is a concern. We gave up a position last year to meet budget requirements. So right now, it's a very, a big struggle to meet the requirement. So the intent was to bring on a transportation expert, get the program set up, start with the evaluation, start with a data collection to get the program going forward, and then in the end of two years, they would hand the program over to the City of Plano staff. What we asked the consultant to do is, if they only did it for one year, what the difference would be, and the number they came back with is an estimated $110,000. That's down from the original, that was brought in August, of $188,000, again, going from one year to two year. The rest of the scope is essentially the same, just it would be a half the timeframe scope change. And so one of the other things that was asked by one of the council members is, call it a heat map, their locations that we get requests. You can see it's, you know, pretty much everywhere. And like I said, 99% of our requests are either for speed, or cut-through traffic, or And this is a map that we started creating. We started implementing this once the street design standards were updated, and so these are the requests over the last 12 months. And this is my last slide, so I'll open it to any questions you may have.
Mayor and Council, real quick, Councilman Riccadelli and Deputy Mayor Protem Homer requested the conversation. So we're really seeking direction from you, whether you want this actually brought back on a future agenda at this point. But with some of the discussions that were had, we felt it was important to go ahead and update some of the details of what was actually included within that plan. So we're actually seeking direction from council tonight, whether you want us to bring that back on a future agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just start by saying thank you, Caleb, for this great presentation and for the information. Caleb actually did that call with Deputy Mayor Protem Homer and myself when he was in the airport, so way to go above and beyond, Caleb. Thank you. I want to just briefly touch on a global point, which is that in the last budget, obviously, you mentioned giving up a position that resulted in some, you know, proposal coming on to a consent agenda for a potential $180,000 contract. I know that several of us have had concerns about the right balance between doing things in-house and outside contractors, you know, who are more expensive when they charge by the hour. So I just want to make sure, I won't be on this council for any more budgets, but I just want to, I didn't even know that was going to be an issue when we did last year's budget, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we're not penny-wise and pound-foolish, and make sure that we have capacity to do things in-house. That being said, y'all may remember last August, we voted this down seven to one. The mayor was the only one who said we should go forward with it. You know, subsequent to that, I was outside with my kids, two of whom are here actually, Ethan and Benjamin, and, you know, Catherine is not here, but, you know, with cars whizzing by, I thought, you know, boy, we've got requests all over the city where people are calling in and saying, I'm not sure that my neighborhood streets are safe. And, you know, I started to have unease about my vote to defer this, because obviously pedestrian safety is of the highest priority. So, you know, with so many kids all over the city whose safety depends on safe streets, with careful driving and traffic at a reasonable speed, I started to look into this again. I talked to Councilmember Prince, who had pulled it off of the consent agenda last August, and we both talked about our mutual preference, that the city try to do more things in-house and minimize the outside consulting spend, which I very, very much agree with. But I'd like to look at other places to trim consulting expenses. Right here, we've got 36 pending requests right now that we are apparently not able to get to, you know, at our current staffing levels, and given the safety concern, which is our number-one function as a municipal government, to keep our citizens safe, that's the basic level before we can provide any other services on top of that, I think we need to be taking action on these now. So while I wish this could be done without a consultant, it apparently can't be at this time. As Caleb mentioned, it has been trimmed down to one year and $110,000, which is not much more, or perhaps even less, than the cost of one full-time equivalent position, depending on what type of position we're talking about. So I would, I would propose that we give direction that we support moving forward with this for the one-year and $110,000 contract, so that we can clear this backlog of 36 requests to make sure that our streets are safe, and then I would, I would hope that we can take it over in-house after that year.
Yes, thank you, Caleb, for a great presentation. Yes, safety has to be our highest priority here, but also, when we look at outside consultants here, we've got to look at the efficiencies of hiring these outside consultants. Traffic management is a specialty engineering. I mean, and to get Caleb's crew spun up on the nuances of how to produce an accurate data set and to analyze that would probably cost us more than $110,000, because there's equipment to rent and placement of that equipment, maintenance of that equipment. And again, it's just that the, if you've done it once, you've done it twice, you've done it three times, great, you've got some experience. This is how we did it in Austin, this is how we did it in Frisco. Caleb's crew, I'm not sure how many guys have done traffic management, to be honest with you. So again, it's a learning curve, so we would lose some efficiencies there. The second part I was wanting to touch base with you are, I get repeated requests for speeding. You know, teenagers hot-rodding and stuff, all around Legacy West. Police have done a great job responding with that. But I still think we need to put these calming measures there, and what I'm getting at is from the evaluation perspective. Maybe also gather data from our police department, where a lot of this, these noise issues are being reported to. So I think we need to tie that with, again, the speeding and the safety protocol, and then hiring through a consultant. I think that's just a wise move in itself. So those are tidbits I want to provide.
Thank you. Shelby?
Thank you, and I appreciate the renewed focus from Councilmembers Riccadelli and Prince, and I appreciate the slimmed-down price. I do have concerns still over something like this, when we're asking our people to vote on a record-high bond package and the attenuating fiscal constraints that we had last year. I'd like to ask, would a study like this fall under the regional mobility program that we're looking at codifying in the DART bill?
Honestly, Councilman, I, that's more of a physical investment in infrastructure along those lines, so I don't know that a study would necessarily qualify. We'd need to look into that further, though.
Okay. That's fair. I would maybe recommend that we wait to see how the DART bill goes. I realize that at least three of us, maybe four of us, will be off of council at that time, but depending on how the DART bill goes, tee this up before the next council with this backstory, saying that whichever way the DART bill goes, these are the options before them. That's just my suggestion.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Caleb, thanks for continuing to push this. You know, we talked about this a while back, and it's definitely something we need. I also am glad to see that, you know, we've cut the potential budget down for outside consultants, but I'm hoping I can save us the $100,000-plus money by giving you some advice. Inadvertently, I've probably studied this and looked at this, an example of this in the City of Dallas for well over a year. We have good friends that live on a residential street that is a throughway between Preston and Hillcrest, so you can imagine the traffic going north and south. They have massive cut-through. And the times that we're there, typically, you know, weekends, traffic used to just be, I mean, it was whizzing by. Not a lot of children, you know, fortunately, that lives there, but there is an elementary school over there. They got together with HOA, and they were able to get the speed bumps, the cushions put in. There's no fast traffic, period. Zero anymore. Nobody racing up and down the street. The, I guess, again, only look at weekends, the episode of traffic themselves cutting through between Preston and Hillcrest is almost nothing, you know, now. So it works, at least it works in this indication, and I would think that the speed cushions, two things, I was, they're probably the least expensive of the alternatives, you know, besides doing a roundabout, which, no roundabouts, please, let's don't do that, I don't care what the consultant says, would be, also, they're least likely, I would say, to damage vehicles that may not notice that they're there, and they happen to go over them, excuse me, they happen to go over them at a higher, a little higher rate of speed, the cars are not going to bottom out. I've experienced that myself. I have a car that sits low to the ground, I go over it 20 miles an hour, no problem whatsoever. So save $110,000, put speed cushions on the street. And then finally, the other thing I think we could do, I talked about before, is utilize the cap services of our police department. Put those folks out there with radar guns at specific areas, that will, that will slow traffic down. Also, it's a volunteer service, so it costs us nothing except gas and, you know, and equipment that needs to be maintained, but that's just my two cents on it. So I would appreciate your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so the police service, what we see from that is immediate reaction, speed slowed down, but it's typically for the duration of when we have somebody out there. So whether we have a stationed police officer, another service, the speed trailers, automatic, you know, it slows the speeds down, but that's usually that temporary timeframe. So when the, the police car moves, or the speed trailer goes away, is when the speeds start coming back up. The speed bumps, you're exactly right, they will slow vehicles down. I think they are probably more damaging, depending on your car type, you know, and clearance, they do create challenges for emergency personnel as well. So I think they have a use, but it's really dependent on the location and what's going on at that particular location. You know, and one thing I did want to touch on is, if there is a safety concern, and I mentioned this to the council members a couple weeks ago, if there is a side distance, if there is a situation where the geometry is creating an unsafe condition, we will address that. We will put in a CIP project to address that. If it simply speeds and cut-through traffic, those are the things that we want to evaluate, because it may not necessarily be simply that they can't see around a corner, they're just, you know, people are driving through that way based on where they normally go. But if there is a true safety issue with it, other than speeding and cut-through, that is something that we will address.
Deputy Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Caleb. I agree with everything that Anthony said when he brought this back to my attention. I wasn't at that meeting physically, I was on Zoom for that meeting back in August, and we were pretty focused on our budget and trying to cut costs where we could, and so I didn't, kind of, at that moment, I didn't realize the item was going to be pulled off the consent agenda, so I didn't have a lot of time to think about it. I was just looking for ways to cut back on the cost. And after talking with Anthony, and, you know, really can't put a price on, on our children's safety, and realizing that this is something that was important to him, leaving council, that he didn't leave this undone, unaddressed, I appreciated that. So it gave me some time to think about it. I understand Councilmember Smith's comment about saving dollars, for example, with the HOA. I don't live in an HOA, so I don't, we don't have dollars to put towards things like that. I also feel like, as a, as a city, that just shows us taking that one extra step to prioritize in an equitable way, who, what situations are we going to address if we have people that are calling with concerns about areas, to make sure that we can show that we have prioritized safety, and, you know, and address the situations that were the most, most dangerous first. The other thing that was on my mind was with the bond referendum coming up, I'd had someone bring up a certain intersection being busier because of adding the police headquarters there. And while I don't, I don't have any concerns, quite honestly, about there being additional dangers there, in fact, the comment was made about new drivers at the CTE Center, and I said, great, we've got a new police station right across the street, that's exactly where I want my new driver to be, if, assuming the bond goes through. So while I don't have concerns, it did have me thinking, you know, it does give me some additional assurances that if there were to be a situation or an intersection that becomes a concern, that we are ahead of the game, that we're already looking at, how are we going to prioritize and address those, those matters? So for, for the cost, you know, Anthony was, was smart to see that we could save money by reducing the timeframe, and appreciate Caleb explaining the program and how it would work. I feel like it's, it would be money well spent, so I would be in support of it, and I don't know if we can make a motion at this point, or we, the direction would be future. Okay. Thank you, Anthony.
Shelby, you had another comment?
Just a quick question, Caleb. To make sure I'm understanding this right, the one-year contract, that's going to be gathering data just at 10 locations, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Are those relatively distributed locations across the city, or the biggest problem points?
It'll probably be the biggest problem points. The areas that we recognize that there is an issue, we've had requests, and Dr. Brian earlier, Brian Shewski, Transportation Manager, we had a request for speeding and cut-through traffic on a street that had four houses on it. We're probably not going to do a volume and speed study on something like that, but on a street that has, where noticeably more volumes and more speeds, that's where we're going to focus our efforts on. Now, I think there was another comment mentioned earlier. We do have equipment, we do have cameras to go out and perform some of these, we even have the staff with the knowledge to, to collect this data. Right now, it's the workload and the timing that we don't have, so. Right now, it's the workload and the timing that we don't have, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Prince?
Can you go back to your slide that showed the different suggestions or options? Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, so you mentioned that the speed cushions are a great option for the emergency vehicles. Are any of these a good option for getting emergency vehicles through a neighborhood quickly and safely?
Yeah, so it would depend on the neighborhood and the location. So, you know, the, the raised table essentially serves as a, as a speed deterrent, similar to the cushion. The difference between a raised table is that's more pedestrian-focused. So if you have a downtown location that's going to have a high volume of pedestrians, you're going to look at their raised table. So it's now serving the pedestrians, but it's also serving as a speed deterrent. The island is going to be, again, pedestrian-focused. Narrowing the roadway, while it may not impact emergency vehicles from going over a hump, narrowing the roadway tends to slow cars down. So that's where those two on the ride are going to be more pedestrian-focused, but that's where it's going to be, we're going to determine what the best option is for the location.
All right. Caleb, it sounds like we'd like to have further proposals on this, so we look forward to hearing about it in the near future.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item four, Cultural Arts Plan. Michelle?
Good evening. I'm Michelle Hawkins, I'm the Downtown Plano Manager. For over the past year, the Cultural Planning Group has worked closely with our community to develop the comprehensive cultural arts plan that's reflective of Plano. So tonight, David Plutner Saunders with the Cultural Planning Group is going to present that plan to you all and this vision it sets forth for our city.
Thank you, Michelle, and good evening, everyone. On behalf of the planning team, we're pleased to present the draft Plano Cultural Arts Plan to you this evening. The name of the plan is Live Creatively in Plano, which came about from our artist-led community sessions led by Plano artist Amber Lee, and it captures the spirit of what the community told us. Here's our agenda for this evening. We'll provide an overview of the planning process, what we learned, the goals and strategies of the plan, implementation and funding options, and then, of course, time for your questions and discussion. So let's start with the planning process. This photo is from one of the community pop-ups, a very casual, fun, creative way to weigh in on a municipal plan. We used a comprehensive, mixed method research methodology. This slide really is intended to say that we did our homework. You know, everyone participates in city planning in their own way, or not. We provided multiple touchpoints for the community to register their voices. We also did significant quantitative and supplemental research to round out our understanding. Our qualitative, face-to-face discussion-type engagement began with this arts forum last Here's a summary of our engagement with professional stakeholders. We met with the arts community throughout the process. We met with many of you last summer. Also, we met with city staff, local businesses, the faith community, social services, funders, and many more. We engaged with the public through audience discussion groups, artist-led community workshops, and community pop-ups. We did a statistically valid survey and a parallel community opens, survey open to all. This allowed us to hear from residents who don't have time or inclination to participate in person. We did a market study, and we did an analysis of your creative economy. Here are the many locations of the public engagement sessions. We met in different parts of the city, at different times of the day and the week, and also during major events. So what did we hear? What do we make of all this research? We heard that Plano is at a critical juncture in its evolution. As many have observed, Plano is maturing as a city and a community. It has a vibrant arts community, cultural diversity, and successful major events, there's a lot going on. We also heard that Plano residents believe the city is lagging behind other cities in the region and needs to focus on its overall cultural vitality. Residents seek a greater presence of the arts in everyday life, not necessarily a culture palace, but rather creative experiences available close to home, in public spaces, and in recreation centers, public art, murals, opportunities to make art with others. And the research shows unequivocally that Plano has the opportunity to increase arts participation. There's a strong market for it among people who live in and near Plano. I said that Plano's got a lot going on in a vibrant arts community, so what does that look like? There are many arts and cultural organizations, artists, creatives, creative businesses and events. There's a concentration in and around the downtown Plano Arts District, of course, and also on the east side of the city. People value Plano's cultural diversity and multicultural programming. However, Plano's creative community is under-recognized locally. People often don't know what's being offered or can't find what they're interested in in Plano, so many residents, as you know, leave the city to attend the arts elsewhere. And as we just said, there's significant untapped audience potential. Almost 90% of Plano households are above-average interest in the arts. So what about the city's role in the arts? We compared the city of Plano's approach to the arts to six other North Texas cities and two elsewhere, selected for comparable population size, suburban character, and proximity to major metropolitan areas. What do the comparisons tell us? Seven of the eight cities have consolidated their arts functions in a department or division. By contrast, Plano's are distributed across several. And as you can imagine, consolidation generally makes for better policy coordination and community impact. Plano demonstrates strong financial commitment to arts and culture, allocating approximately $1.5 million annually to grants, significantly higher than any comparison city. This represents about $5.10 per capita in Plano compared to Richardson's $3.07, Irving's $1.97, and Frisco's $1.33 per capita. Plano's cultural facilities align with regional standards, offering similar venue types and capacities to neighboring communities. The Courtyard and Cox Theaters are comparable to other small venues in the region, though Richardson's Eiseman Center, of course, stands out among facilities in all communities with its large performance hall seating 1,600. This suggests that Plano has a strong financial commitment to the arts, and there are new opportunities to increase the community impact of those resources. And as we'll talk about in a few minutes, the recommendations of this plan focus on those opportunities, including consolidating arts functions under a cultural affairs manager, spreading out the grants and other resources, fitting programming to meet community needs, and restarting a public art program. What are the community's priorities for arts and culture? First, to make Plano a recognized community arts destination, not Dallas, but rather a place with more varied and higher-quality arts, arts offerings. Events and activities closer to home that are more accessible in terms of time, cost, and location. Public art that you walk or drive by, live music at the local restaurant or bar, and an art class for your kids within a 10-minute drive. Of course, some of these things are now available in Plano, but we heard across all groups that people want better information sources, you know, better ways to learn about and plug into things that interest them locally. They also don't just want things to attend, they want hands-on arts activities. Plano residents have a sophisticated understanding of the role the arts play in economic development, and they want to see that expanded. There's also market demand for various facilities of various types and for affordable artists' The city faces competition from Dallas and nearby cities, but it has an opportunity to forge its own, your own, distinct cultural identity in the region, like we just mentioned. Plano also can emphasize its inherent competitive advantages, its characteristics like its family-friendly nature, informal suburban lifestyle, and diverse population. Residents identified long-term priorities with a go-to information source at the top of the list. Surprisingly, the second long-term priority was making it more possible for local artists to live and work here in Plano and not have to leave to pursue their careers. Plano's arts organizations and artists detailed their needs. More performance exhibition and studio spaces, also better connections, networking, and coordination, especially coordinated marketing. Artists especially have low visibility in Plano and simply seek opportunities to work here and to contribute to the community through their creativity. Public support for arts, city arts funding is strong, 65%, two-thirds of residents in the statistically valid survey. Now, we'd like to share with you the goals and strategies, the recommendations of the plan. They're based on the sum total of all the research and engagement, and they provide the means to meet the community's vision and priorities for arts and culture in their The plan focuses on three goals. The first is community, what we learned about the residents and their desires for their cultural lives here in Plano. The second is creative community, what we heard from the arts and culture sector. The third is city government, what role the city can take to support implementation of this plan. So let's take a look at each goal and some selected strategies. The community goal. The first strategy is about the kinds of arts programming the community desires and may be missing or less available in Plano. The public seeks a greater variety of more sophisticated programming, as well as programming intended for specific audiences like adults, young adults, youth, and families, things they now often leave Plano to find. The second strategy calls for coordinated and citywide marketing of the arts. This was one of the most common needs, and it's also one reason people don't attend more in Plano because they simply don't learn about things that interest them in a timely manner. The second strategy calls for coordinated and citywide marketing of the arts. This was one of, one of the most common needs, and it's, oh, I'm sorry. 1.4 is about public art. The city used to have a percent-for-art program, and although it does not currently have one, it's done some recent pilot public art projects, like the sculptures on 15th Street. The community wants to see more public art, not just outdoor sculptures, but also temporary and interactive pieces, murals, and things like artists' design utility boxes and crosswalks. This overlaps with 1.5, which is about creative placemaking. People express a desire for more gathering places throughout the city, whether in malls, parks, downtown, or other spots. They often describe Plano as vanilla and desire a more interesting and intentionally-designed built environment. There are lots of ways to activate and enliven existing spaces. Now, moving on to the creative community, this goal focuses on the needs of the arts sector and ways to better enable it to make art and serve the community. 2.1 is about the grants program and recommends changes to provide funding to a broader range of organizations and create new funding categories, including funding for individual artists. 2.2 is essentially a cross-reference to the marketing program we just spoke about. Marketing really supports all three of the goals. 2.3 acknowledges the essential role of Plano's individual artists. It calls for funding, professional development, work opportunities, and other ways to highlight and make use of artists living in Plano. 2.5 through 2.7 focus on facilities and spaces for the arts. We heard loud and clear the need for a range of cultural facilities and other spaces. These recommendations call for the city to develop or partner in the development of a number of facilities that would meet identified community needs. Specifics include a community cultural center, which was the subject of a 2017 study, also gallery spaces, artists' live work, and a citywide directory of available spaces. The third goal is about evolving the role of the city and meeting the challenges of fulfilling the community's vision. 3.1 calls on the city to consolidate its current arts functions into an office of cultural affairs or maybe office of creative life. The plan calls for the city to do new things, and this will be more effective through internal coordination. 3.2 recommends a general review and alignment of city policy to best serve the evolving needs of the community. This means reevaluating grants policies, facility use policies, and event permitting. It also means coordinating city arts and cultural activities across all departments, including recreation and libraries. 3.3 is about the Cultural Arts Commission. The commission now primarily focuses on grants, on the grants process. This envisions broadening the commission's scope to include advising city council on all arts and cultural issues. You know, every cultural plan raises expectations for more money, for more resources, and questions about how to pay for implementation. First, a word about roles. This cultural plan was commissioned by the city, and one important purpose was to define an appropriate role for the city moving forward. But cultural plans by nature involve partnerships, they're often different from other municipal master plans. The plan can't be implemented without partnerships and the active participation of arts organizations, artists, creative businesses, corporations, and of course, residents. The plan details many opportunities for each sector to take a role in elements of the plan and invites everyone's participation. An implementation plan, of course, is key to success of the overall plan, and in consultation with city staff, starting points have been identified for implementation in the first three years. Staff will lead most action steps in the implementation plan, calling on partners as needed. Staff will also form an interdepartmental action team to provide, to address action steps involving two or more departments and to provide a broader perspective. Other starting points are to create a centralized online marketing and information hub and to revamp the grants program. Longer-term priorities will be established and future action plans developed as part of the annual work plan and budgeting process. The currently, the city currently funds its arts and cultural programs primarily from the hotel occupancy tax and from general funds, very consistent with other Texas cities. These support the city's arts grants programs, special events, city-owned cultural facilities, and library and rec programs. Staff has also secured grant funding from outside the city for the downtown arts district, public art, and other uses, and so these are all invaluable ways to pay for the arts and should continue. There are additional options for new revenues for the arts. If the city chooses to revive its current public art, its percent-for-art program, this would generate additional monies for public art. If it explores an art incentive or requirement for private real estate development, this would also generate new funds for public art or art spaces. Many cities form a nonprofit fundraising arm, a Friends of the Arts-type foundation to raise private dollars to support compelling community needs identified in a cultural plan. This is commonly done for libraries and park systems and can be very effective in bringing new money to the table. And of course, Plano participates in capital bond issues every five years or so, and this is one way to help finance cultural facilities projects. And with that, thank you for your patient attention, and we invite your questions and discussion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Do you have any questions? Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you for your, your great work on this plan. I had a, a few questions about some things that were in it. You mentioned increasing access to city performance venues, which I think is, is important, that's something we've heard about. How would you recommend that we go about it? How would you recommend that we go about increasing access to existing venues?
Well, one of the recommendations that we talked about in the third goal, the city goal, is to reevaluate the facility use policies. That was not part of our scope to actually delve into that, but we do know from our conversations with staff and the arts community that there's been some differences of opinion, competing priorities for the use of stage time and access to the theaters, and it's just time to reevaluate that now in light of what we've heard from the community as well as the arts community.
Thank you. And also, you talked about prioritizing Plano organizations for grants and rentals. So for example, the Courtyard Theater right now, if I'm an arts group in Allen, I get the same priority as an arts group in Plano?
I'm not sure what the policies are in the nearby cities, yeah.
No, I was saying, so it doesn't have to be Allen. I was just saying, I was just picking a different city. Somebody who's not in Plano is getting the same priority to sign up for a date at the Courtyard Theater as a Plano arts organization does?
That I don't know. That would be a good question for Jason. But I think the point is there's some -- there are some challenging issues that staff has been confronted with in terms of the facility use policies. There are competing interests, and we think it's just time to reevaluate that, to revisit it, and that is something that can be done by staff through their interdepartmental action team in light of what, again, what we've heard from residents about, you know, what they would like to see, as well as what the arts organizations need and desire.
Okay, thank you. And I have some comments. I don't know if we were wanting to do questions first, or is this the appropriate time, Mayor, to make comments?
Yeah, I'll come back to you.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Prince.
Thanks so much, Mayor.
Oh, yeah. There you go.
I got cut off.
No, I could hear you.
My last meeting, I'm done. I've got a few more things to say, folks, and you don't have to hear me anymore.
I did not cut you off.
I'm just giving you a hard time. Okay. I appreciate your presentation, and what I appreciate most about it is I think a lot of times people hear arts and they think paintings, people dancing, people singing, people playing an instrument, but I appreciate that y'all took it a little broader than that and you went into the place-making, the way people feel in a space. That's something that I'm very passionate about, and I think there is opportunity, you know, just as, you know, we look at how we redesign aging parks and we update things like that, and we redesign aging retail, and we look at redesigning or rehabilitating neighborhoods and work with HOAs, there's opportunities to add these little special elements that you mentioned throughout. And every time that we work with developers and they come before us, just as we ask them to add green space, I think there's opportunities to encourage people to think along these lines. And I think sometimes we think that it's very complex to add these little special moments throughout the city, but sometimes it can be as simple as painting on the sidewalk, a place where somebody could do hopscotch, or somebody, you know, you could create a checkerboard and then throw the checkers out there. And I've seen some of our restaurants get creative about this, and they have a very small area, but they make it green and then they throw cornhole out there. And so I think if we encourage the people we're working with to get more creative along these lines, we don't have to put it all on the city, though I know that you're encouraging us to do that. I think we can make sure we have partnerships with the people that we're working with to think along those lines and put those into the projects they're bringing before us.
We totally agree, and it's what we heard from residents again and again. There are many small opportunities as well as big projects, but many small opportunities to enliven just the fabric of everyday living with creativity and the arts.
Back.
I'm back, yeah. I guess it looks like nobody else has comments, so I'll make my comment. So first of all, I think Councilmember Prince, as is typical, put that very well. I agree with the opportunity to just add character throughout the city in these small ways throughout the city, and also that it's not all on the city. You know, I was really encouraged in this -- in this report to see that we do demonstrate strong financial commitment to arts and culture. Something for those, you know, who may not have read the report, Plano's contribution of $1.5 million annually to the arts through hotel occupancy tax represents $5.10 per capita, which compares to Richardson's $3.07, Irving's $1.97, and Frisco's $1.33. And, you know, and we also know that hotel occupancy taxes are projected to increase. So I think that we will have continued opportunities to increase arts funding through hotel occupancy tax, which are a legally restricted revenue that is supposed to be used for things like arts and historic preservation. I would encourage us to be careful about some of the ideas for revenues that would come out of the general fund because -- or especially debt because of how tight our budget currently is. I mean, we obviously just had a discussion about $110,000 for a project relating to pedestrian safety. I think that demonstrates how tight our budget is. Every year, we know that we run out of money for the great update rebate and tenant-based rental assistance, which are housing-related programs, and also, of course, we've got a $648 million bond package already on the ballot. So I would encourage us to continue funding arts programs through hotel occupancy tax and increasing that as hotel occupancy tax increases as we project. I think also the Arts and Culture Foundation philanthropy with our corporate partners in the community is a great idea, and I would champion that as well. I think that's a great way to partner with the corporate community. I would exercise a note of caution about subsidizing for-profit artists, except through our normal economic development program that applies to all sorts of for-profit enterprises. And obviously, they would need to create more city revenue than the amount of the grant, you know, I think for that to be appropriate, as is typically the case. And toward that end, I would look to maybe change on page 46 where the city's role says the city serves primarily as a facilitator functioning as the local arts agency to ensure the creative community has necessary resources and capacity. To Councilmember Prince's point, I think that really reads like it's all on the city. You know, it's our job to ensure necessary resources and capacity. I think we partner with, you know, with our corporate community, with the arts community, and so I'd love for that to instead read as the local arts agency helping to provide resources and capacity to the creative community through hotel occupancy tax. And then again, also regarding debt, page 31 of this report points out that Plano's facility portfolio aligns with regional standards, offering similar venue types and capacities to neighboring communities. And so I would, in the short term, given that we already have a $648 million bond package out there, and I know that there are a lot of needs coming up again in 2029, I would encourage the next council to be really careful about debt for venues because we have so many other needs for infrastructure maintenance that we're going to have to issue debt for. And then a couple of final points. I'd love to see our efforts really focused on things with a public-facing benefit. So I loved your mention of youth and participatory arts programs. I think those are two great examples where there's a broadly dispersed community benefit, and so I love that idea. I'm a little more skeptical about the workspace subsidizing idea, just because of, you know, just because, you know, that confers a more focused benefit on one individual, similar to what we discussed with the HUD consolidated plan last time. And then finally, I support the consolidation of staff within our organization for greater efficiency. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Protem.
Thank you for all of your comments already. I agree with just about all of them. There was only one comment that Councilmember Riccadelli made that was different than a lot of the feedback I've gotten from the arts group, and that was specifically about the city's role in facilitating the arts. Unfortunately, I think what I've heard from the arts group is that there needs to be more leadership, that there needs to be a centralized place for the arts. Otherwise, no offense, all of our arts people, creative people are very creative, but sometimes we need a little bit of that, you know, kind of project management and also looking to see, you know, what's beneficial to all groups and to all citizens. So I think that would be the only thing that I've heard a lot of feedback was that multiple times I've heard there needs to be a centralized group within the city, there needs to be a dedicated city staff member overseeing the arts, and so that's really the only thing very different that -- or that I disagree based on the input that I've heard. I love the ideas about taking this opportunity as we're revitalizing areas to incorporate the arts. And then as the bond referendum was brought up, you know, I actually see that as an opportunity as well. If that passes, we're going to have, if, for example, the police headquarters passes, that's new space that will be developed, and I think it's an opportunity for us to collaborate with different departments within the community, within the city government to create spaces that can be used by both local government, also arts groups, and so I just don't want to miss out on that. And I think the timing of this is great. You know, if the bond does pass and there are these new facilities on the horizon, I'm glad that the arts are front of mind so that we're thinking about the best way to create these new spaces and incorporate the arts into it.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could quickly clarify, and I'll do it in less than 60 seconds, I promise. So I agree with what Deputy Mayor Protem Holmer said, and to clarify, I wasn't saying that the city shouldn't play a leadership role. I agree with the designated staff person and the facilitation role. I was just saying, I don't know that the city should take on its shoulders, kind of being the one that has to ensure funding for all of the arts needs. I think funding needs to come from the city through hotel occupancy taxes and then from other sources as well. But absolutely, that kind of, you know, head of the roundtable, you know, chairing things, leadership facilitation role, I think the city can do that. And I'd also love to throw in, as you pointed out, Deputy Mayor Protem Holmer, as we do additional development ourselves as the city, we can encourage the community to come in and make art. I was at TML one time, and I think there was something about public art in Luddington, Michigan or something, where the city had had residents come in and they could, you know, paint something. I think it was like a paint-by-numbers almost that the residents could do together. I'd love to see that at city facilities.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that report. We look forward to more information as we get moved forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is consent and regular agendas. Is there an item the councilman would like to remove?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, me again. I'll be recusing myself from item K, so I'm pulling that off of the consent agenda.
Okay, Shelby.
I'm looking up to confirm. I think I'd like to pull off item F.
Okay, and Lisa, we had some speakers for three others, correct?
For D and G. Sorry. So there'd be D, F, G, and K.
I see M, too.
You see M, too?
Feel like this is Sesame Street right now.
Oh. Yep, there is an M.
Yes. Okay, so...
So D, F, G, K, and M.
All right. Lovely. Next item, council items for discussion and future agendas. Okay. We'll take a recess and return in five minutes. I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened into open session, that all members are present. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Pastor Julian McMillan with Grace Church Plano and the pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge led by Cub Scout PAC 221, the charter organization North Texas Pioneers Rotary Club at the First United Methodist Church. Would you please rise?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for today. Lord, I thank you for the blessing that is Plano. And God, I thank you that we remain to be a city of safety, a city of excellence where your presence resides. Lord, I just pray for our city. Let it remain that way. I pray for our city council members and our mayor. May the health of God be with them and their families. God, I pray for today. I pray for today's meeting that your wisdom is here, your strength is here, and your presence is here. So be glorified tonight, and it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Mayor, City Council, citizens of Plano, I would like to introduce you to PAC 221 with Plano under the leadership of our two great leaders. Would you come forward? Take over, sir.
All right. Set.
All right, scouts, salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Two. Scouts dismiss. Oh, wait. One second. They hear from the mayor.
All right, let's take a picture with all of them. Come on in. You got it. Come on. Come on, come on, come on. Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Comments of public interest?
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow to three minutes per speaker with 30 total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have two speakers this evening. The first one is Bill Lyle.
My name is Bill Lyle, and I'm here to bring something to your attention. It's ordinance 2012-3-18. This is the ordinance that Phil Dyer signed on March 26 of 2012. And what it did is it established our municipal court as a municipal court of record. I'm going to read to you from what was submitted to council then. It says, whereas the appeals from Plano Municipal Court may be retried at the county court at the request of the defendant. And whereas the city council finds that retrying the same case at the county court is not the best use of resources and results in the delay of final decisions. And whereas the city council finds that establishing the municipal court as a court of record will aid in the disposition of cases by limiting appeals and allowing the final disposition of the case for trial purposes in the municipal court. Another way to say this is you can't appeal. Now, technically, you can, but it's extremely difficult. And they said back then, hey, the reason we want to do this is because we don't want these cases to go to the county and get retried. But is that what's best for justice? Is that someone that's accused in a criminal situation in Plano has to go before a judge that's paid by Plano? I'm not saying we have a bad judge. I'm just saying that if he would have dismissed the case that I had a month ago, I would have had Exhibit A that the government was coming after me for a bad reason. Now, the case that was tried that can't be appealed, okay, let me go back to that. I tried to appeal it, but in order to appeal, you have to get the record. In order to get the record, you have to pay for the record. The estimate to get the record from my day-long trial in municipal court was $2,000. My fines were $50 for each violation plus court cost. So I had $250 in total cost. But I have to admit that I violated something and that I'm a criminal. I didn't have to admit it. The jury found me guilty. But here's the problem. The judge is the one that decides what evidence goes in front of the jury and what you can say because the prosecutor files a motion in limine restricting everything that you want to say. And they get granted. Mr. Riccadelli, Maria Two, y'all understand what I'm talking about. Y'all can't practice in our municipal court. And the reason is because if the judge fines for your side, he's going to look impartial and he doesn't want to find against you because you hire him. And so I think the easiest way to do this, if it's allowed, is that we go back to a municipal court, not a municipal court of record, where
Time.
We've got the chance to appeal to an impartial judge.
The next speaker is Denise Loflin.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, everyone.
Pull the mic closer.
All right. How's this?
That's better.
All right. I'm here, I'm claiming litigation privilege. This is regarding Epic City and why Epic City absolutely cannot be furthered. I don't know if anybody's really traveled. I'm an immigrant here, and what's going on is the state of Texas is being played by the Muslim Brotherhood, by Mr. Quadi, by the Muslim Brotherhood, everybody involved. Mr. Quadi's open declaration of war for everyone who opposes Islamization of Texas is open jihad. It's a declaration of war, which is technically jihad, all right? It's treason, it's sedition. Mr. Manz, you've been played when you, Commissioner Duncan Webb, and whoever the trustees went to Epic Mosque, none of you had any authority to go and do private religious education, do anything to talk in that mosque about Sharia law, Sharia education, anything grossly discriminated against Christians and Jews. Mr. Quadi has a death threat against him by ISIS. He's belittled by a number of Muslim scholars. He's effectively developed Sharia law Muslim enclaves. And because of this, the hearing on March 31st, everybody's conflicted out. Duncan Webb conflicted out. He should have recused himself. He had foreknowledge. Dan Cogdill, lawyer for Epic City at all, he also represents Texas Attorney General Ken Paxton. It's fraud on the court. The whole thing is completely illegal. It's got to be stopped. Epic City is 1,500 acres with Islamists coming into this North Texas area. And I'm telling you guys, you need to know, please, study and read. I'm going to follow up this presentation, but Texas has been taken over by Islamists. If you think I'm kidding, look at Pakistan, look at Sweden, look at France, look what's happening in Britain, in Canada. Don't be so naive. It's happening here. Plano City Council has allowed Muslim enclaves around these mosques? You think I'm kidding? Please, Britain's tried to warn us. Canada's going under. You people are the gate between the Islamists taking over. Have you read the Quran? Do you know what they want to do to Christians, to Jews? Do you have any idea? Read what Quadi writes in his writings. Listen to those tapes. But anyhow, Epic City cannot go ahead. Mr. Manz, you, the county commissioners, and the city of Plano, you're grossly conflicted out. That's a complete wash, and Quadi needs to be prosecuted for treason, sedition, and declaring war on the United States and the state of Texas. I'll follow up.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
Sorry. That was my fault.
Yeah, I got to remove a bunch. Yeah.
Do you need a copy?
No, I got it.
Okay.
Motion to approve, except for items D, F, G, K, and M.
Right.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda, or very little of it, with the exception of D, F, G, M, and K. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Let's start with D.
Okay. This takes me just a second, so let me get in here. Start with which one?
D.
Okay. I thought you said J for some reason. Too many letters in my brain.
That's not one of them.
Item D, RFQ number 2023-0570X for engineering services for 7203 Breckenridge Trail Extension, Bradshaw Drive to Shiloh Road Station, Project PKRP 0002 for the Parks and Recreation Department, Tushawberg &amp; Polk Incorporated, in the amount of $808,745, and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is Ron Smith, your Parks and Recreation Director. This RFQ expenditure is for ultimately a federal grant-funded design consultant services for the Breckenridge Trail. Ultimately, 100% of this project, as anticipated, would be paid for by a federal grant. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
Do you have any speakers?
We do have a speaker on this item, Bill Lyle.
Good evening, council. As you all may imagine, I looked through the agendas for y'alls meetings, and it's always nice when I can just keep going, but every once in a while, something catches my eye. And I noticed that we were about to approve $808,000 for engineering professional services on 1.6 miles of trail. That's not a lot of trail, and $808,000 is a lot of money. So I started asking questions. And I'm just going to point out some things that give me trouble. One, I got 100 and 100 some odd page packet from the engineering services folks, and they estimate the cost of this project at $4.2 million. But when you ask staff, which I also did in an email, the cost of a trail, they say between $1 million and $1.25 million per mile. That means the 1.6 by the 1.25 is $2 million for this trail. But the engineers are estimating it $4.2 million. Well, why would they do that? Well, professional services are based on a percentage of the total construction cost. That's the way it works. Other things that give me pause is in the background paragraph on the council agenda item, it says that the city commissioned a feasibility study in 2020 to determine the optimum trail alignment. That means we already know where the trail's going to go. The trail is on relatively flat land. A mile of it is in encore easement. I walked it with my dog today. It's just like you would imagine under power lines, 100-foot-wide easement, grass, gentle, not a bunch of slopes or anything else. The last half mile is a long Shiloh road. We're replacing one sidewalk with a bigger sidewalk, is what I'm imagining. So something that gives me pause, not approving the contract with Shonberg &amp; Polk would result in the city having to forfeit the awarded $4.2 million grant funding and delay the design. Well, I asked the question, when is the real deadline? Like, really? If they don't approve this tonight, we're going to lose the $4.2 million? Well, the real deadline is to have a completed project by the end of 2028. I understand it takes time to do things, but you still have almost three years to do it. Additionally, if you look at the city of Plano request for qualifications sheet that was filled out when they score, when the panel scored the contractor, you notice that they opened it on Tuesday, June 25th, 24 at 2:00 p.m.
20 seconds.
So the Parks Department's been sitting on this information, or I should say, had this information, for 10 months, and it's just now coming before y'all. And if you don't approve it, we're going to forfeit the funding, is the language that they put in your agenda item. So something's not right if it takes $5 million to build 1.6 miles of trail. I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will try to keep this brief because Dr. Smith, our fearless leader of Parks and Recreation, sent a very encyclopedic email earlier today. Well, I don't know if, I don't want to preempt you if you're going to go through this, but I just wanted to share facts before we vote.
Okay.
If you want to go through it, though, that's
No, I'll be happy to just be here if there are any questions for staff to answer.
Okay, well, thank you. So it looks to me, from what you sent out, like the opinion of probable cost is about 4.16 million?
Correct.
And so this would be, and typically, engineering costs for a federally funded project range from 20 to 25%, and this is slightly under 20%?
That is correct.
Okay, gotcha. And I will tell you, it looks to me, from reading your very thorough email, which I read in its entirety earlier today, like the fact that these are federal funds through construction mitigation and air quality funds administered through TechDOT, which is a state agency, add a lot of state and federal reporting requirements. I think you mentioned in one place maybe 497 of them.
Yes, so we have, there was a list that those are TechDOT requirements. Not all of those 498 would be part of this project, but it is an example of how federal funding a project run through TechDOT adds a significant layer of regulation that the consultant would ultimately be responsible for managing.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. And so without going through this entire email, there are just a lot of different requirements here. There's a There's a lot more to this project than just designing a straight, flat trail. I mean, a lot of different things that go into this. And so given all of these facts, and, you know, I'm happy to share the email with anyone who's out there watching, but I initially had concerns about this price as well. But it makes a lot more sense to me after reading everything that's in this email. I do think some of this is unfortunately necessitated by state and federal reporting requirements that strike me as overkill. But that is unfortunately not in our purview to change. We have to do the state and federal reporting requirements. And so unfortunately, this, this does look reasonable. So I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Well, thank you. I believe that Anthony, if he says he read every bit of it, I believe that he did. And I feel, feel better about the item after hearing that from you. I would like just an understanding of the process as, as far as the, the question that came up about the timeframe of both putting it on the agenda and how soon it needs to be approved.
Sure. So the process of applying for the grant, receiving the grant, takes a lot of time to do that. We also have the procurement process that goes through our contract management department. There are a lot of processes involved with that. Teeing it up, getting it ready for council. We want to be ready, that we have everything in order before we bring it to council for full consideration. That's, 10 months may seem like a long time, but the way that the gears grind, that's not necessarily an exorbitant amount of time for something like this. And as far as the timing, the deadline of 2028 completion by that year, it's going to take about 12 months to design this project, another 12 to 18 months to deliver it, which puts us into 2028. So though it may seem like we're pushing the gas unnecessarily, we really have the timing laid out. And tonight would be a good night to, to approve this project that ultimately is going to be funded by the federal government. No city of Plano tax would be used for this project.
Does that include the, the engineering?
Yes, ma'am.
Fees as well?
It sure.
And then just one other question, which maybe Anthony can answer after all of his reading. I noticed there was a fee in there. I think it was $35,000 for public input meetings. Is that a requirement as well of state or federal government?
Yes, so the, there are federal requirements that are above and beyond what would typically be a park project. We engage the public when we're doing master planning and things like that. But this, there are some federal requirements through this TextDOT managed grant that requires an additional layer of public engagement.
Well, thank you, Dr. Smith. And thank you, Councilmember Rick Adeli, for your thoroughness as well. Appreciate it. Yeah, I'll second it.
Yes. I do sympathize with Mr. Lyle when he's questioned this. But my 35 years in doing work as a contractor for the federal government, both EPA, Corps of Engineers, and the Air Force, yes, there's a significant amount of oversight on this. Just this little project, you're going to have a hydraulic study, you're going to have an environmental impact study, you've got public comment. And all these, because it's federal dollars, we are partners with the public. That's why you have the public comment portion of this. And then you have third-party oversight from the construction for quality control. It becomes quite onerous. And the RFP packages are huge. I've seen RFP packages 1,100 to 1,200 pages. Ad nauseam. And is there a simple way of doing it? Probably. But it is the cards were dealt.
That's right.
So I would support this motion. And again, Mr. Lyle, I sympathize with you on this, but that's where the cost is.
Shelby?
Thank you. A couple of questions. I had concerns about this as well. First, was this grant exclusively for this trail project? This specific trail project?
Yes.
Okay. And second, I hadn't seen the email that Councilmember Rick Adeli referred to, so I've been trying to review it here on the dais.
I think 2:20 PM today.
Yeah, yeah, I found it when he mentioned it. But this was, the opinion of probable cost was in September of 2020.
Correct.
I think most of us have tried to block that year out of our minds. But I recall that in later 2020, construction costs were exorbitantly high. Have we had a revision of this estimate?
Well, we also consider, we have not had a revision of this estimate. We have seen that construction costs have not necessarily fallen off the table since 2020. There was a, an increase significantly, but we maybe have seen things level off, but there hasn't been a precipitous decline in the cost of things with inflation over the last several years. We have not had specifically reevaluating that. We feel really good with this number still, considering what we've seen over the last eight to 10 projects that we've done most recently, that we still feel that this is a pretty accurate assessment of what that's going to cost. And when the, the RFQ came in, the tally report, we expected somewhere around $1 million for the design. And then when the TextDOT came back with their estimation of what our cap should be at $980,000, staff felt really good after the assessment and that we had selected a firm that we felt could really deliver a quality project. When their cost came in below those two thresholds, we felt really good that we were in the right spot.
Okay, thank you. And last question, I think. If the total cost of this project doesn't meet the grant amount, what happens with the excess money?
If it, the, what happens to the excess money? I don't know the answer to that specifically. That's the first time that we've been asked, when we come under budget, what the scenario would be. That's something that I could find out. Let me ask, we do have park planning staff, Renee Jordan here. Renee, do you know the answer to that? No. We'll have to look into what happens to federal funding if the grant comes in under budget.
Let's, uh, let's try to get it under budget. Answer that question.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Ron, appreciate all the work staff has done on this. But I, so I, again, I just want to be sure I understand this correctly. So what I'm hearing you say is essentially, because these are, this is federal dollars, this is a federal grant, the, the overall project is probably costing 40% plus or minus higher than if you or I were just building it, you know, for our, for our own use. So, so the federal funds used on a public prop, public project are going to add that much of a layer of regulation and reporting requirements.
I think that that's a pretty accurate assessment. So the, the design is a correlation of the complexity of the project. The more complex the project is to design, the more that's going to cost. So this in it of itself is not just a straight shot over parkland that's already owned. This is in an encore easement. There's also Atmos Underground Pipeline. There's also an Explorer Jet Fuel Pipeline underneath. We've got the different parcels that will require some easement acquisition, both temporarily and, and permanent. So there are a lot of complications to this. And then when you add to that the layering of the federal grant and those expectations, I would say that a 40% increase wouldn't be out of the ballpark. So it would be cheaper if we wanted to spend our own dollars to do it. But when the federal government says, here's an opportunity to do it tax-free from the city's perspective, that's probably a bet worth taking.
Great. And, and you just pointed out one thing I was about to say. It's, it's sort of, it is like free money for the city. We're not expending our direct budget funds. But we, as taxpayers, all of us, are still footing the bill for it.
That's correct.
It's just coming back to us through the federal government. And as a result of that privilege of getting it with the federal government, we get to pay 40% more for projects. So hopefully, that's going to get resolved next, next few years. But anyway, I just want to get that straight before we vote on it.
Yeah, those, those federal expectations are something that we're working with.
Thanks.
All right. So I have a motion of second to approve item F on the consent agenda. Please vote. D?
Gosh.
D.
D, excuse me. All right. Please vote on item D. Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, RFP number 2024-0438-AC for a one-year contract with 19 automatic renewals for utility billing customer information system for the customer, for the customer and utility billing finance division to Spry Point Services in the estimated annual amount of $1,860,300 for the first year and in the estimated total amount of all annual, if all annual renewals are exercised, $16,023,357 for a total estimated amount of $17,883,657 and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening. I'm Denise Tackey, and I'm the Finance Director for the city of Plano. Customer and Utility Services falls under my purview. And we've been working on this project to get a new CIS system. We started about 18 months ago or so. We're very excited that we have selected a system that we think is going to be much more functional than the system we currently have. So excited that my staff is all in the back row in the red shirts there here to see this item approved. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about it.
Yes, thank you very much. Don't have a problem with the software necessary. The thing that caught my eye was that it's, there's 19 automatic one-year renewals. 20 years in the lifespan of software is pretty ancient. Is there a reason that there are 19 automatic renewals?
There are. We can always get out of a renewal if we always leave an out in our contracts. But this is actually a true enterprise system, and it's not beyond the realm that it would have a 20-year life. And so we went ahead and set it up to have a 20, 20-year life, to have the 19 automatic renewals, just for the ease of not having to bring it back before council. But I will tell you, JD Edwards is our general ledger software, and that software we've had for 26 years. So it, for a true enterprise system, and that's what that is, that is pretty typical, that it could last that long.
Okay. But this would take council taking separate action to not renew at any given point in the future, right? Rather than proactive review of the contract to determine whether we wanted to continue it?
Well, I'm not sure why council would want to not renew unless staff recommended that we not renew it because the software wasn't working. But purchasing this software upfront is costly. And so that's the reason we wanted to automatically renew, so that you're just paying for, you know, the maintenance agreements on it.
Yeah. Oh, I fully agree with a period of automatic renewals, but 19 of them strikes me as a little excessive. Personally, I'd feel comfortable with, more comfortable with about 10 years automatic and then 10 years optional. But you're right. I mean, for an enterprise system, it can go on a long time. Those are the questions I have. Thank you.
I have two questions. One, did we get a significant cost savings by committing to the 20 years? And two, in that 20 years, because software does change, are they committing to updating regular software updates for us?
They are actually. The thing about this company is they do automatic updates. It's the way that they are. That's why it's called Spry, because they really do go in and update the software. They're really listening to their customers that are coming up with things that would make it better. Because this is really one that has a lot of customer impact. You'll be able to get text messages on your cell phone that tell you that maybe your water usage looks like it's getting higher, that kind of thing. I don't know that we really got a significant savings for doing 19 years. We just felt like that that was the most prudent way to do it at this point in time.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. So Denise, if I'm understanding correctly, whether we were to approve this with the 19 automatic renewals or with bringing it back to the council after 10 years, as Councilmember Williams was suggesting, the city would still have the option to have this enterprise software for 20 years. It's just a question of whether there would be a council review of that contract in 10 years. Is that correct?
It is. But I, I'm not sure that I see the need for a review after 10 years. If the software is not working for us, staff will bring that to you, and we will look at something else. That if this isn't working for our customer base, we're obviously not going to stay with it. That's the reason we're moving from utility that we're on right now.
Okay. Well, and thank you for that. I do agree with Councilmember Williams about a review after 10 years. Frankly, none of us who are on the council currently will be here 10 years from now. Some, some of us won't be here much more than 10 days from now. But, you know, I, I, I'd like to, to, I guess I'll make a motion to approve this item, except with one change, that after year 10, it come back to council for a review of whether to authorize staff to exercise those next 10 renewals.
I'd second that motion. Amended motion.
So just, just to clarify, staff will be bringing this back at that 10-year review. We're approving it as, as to the way it's currently structured.
Yes.
Because we have that out, out aspect, we will bring that back in advance of that out clause so that council can review and be updated by staff at that time to determine whether they want to continue going forward.
Exactly. That's what I was envisioning. I wouldn't want to make it so that we lose any option as a city to keep renewing it. Because, you know, obviously, if it's working well, we want to be able to renew at the same price for all 20 years. I, I'm just envisioning that the council would have a checkpoint to approve the second 10 years, 10 years from now.
So the review is internal. It has, it will not be a, a new revision of the contract.
Not, not a new contract, exactly. It would just come before the council 10 years from now to determine whether council would authorize the staff to exercise the renewal option for year 11, if that makes sense.
I'll be watching that meeting in 10 years.
All right. So I have a motion of second to approve item F with the, with the revision for the city of Plano council to review it at the end of 10 years. Is that right? All right, please, please, please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Okay.
Item G, to approve the purchase of 14 BNVD SG System Night Vision Binoculars for the police department in the amount of $111,779 from night vision devices through an existing contract and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Good evening, council. Dan Curtis, Assistant Chief for the Police Department. As she said, this item is to purchase 14 night vision binocular systems for use for the, with the police department SWAT team. The item would be funded primarily through a urban area security initiative, federal grant. I think $105,000 through the grant, with the remaining $6,000 being paid for through CID funds, Criminal Investigative Funds, there for use for the SWAT team.
All right. Thank you. We have a speaker? Okay?
We do have a speaker, Bill Lyle.
The statute is unconstitutionally broad as it applies to these circumstances in that it deprives the business owner of their liberty and their rights to sell property at their own business. at their own business. And it is, as such, it's unconstitutionally broad. And by the way, the proof is insufficient as a matter of law to show that he's guilty anyway. The defendant is found not guilty and discharged. I'll let you know what this has to do with binoculars in a minute.
Yeah, real quick. All right.
I have three minutes, I think.
Yeah, but you need to be on task here.
I'm on topic.
All right, go.
Well, I don't have a good picture in my mind of what the area looked like, so I don't know. I'm having to go based on what the officer said and what the defendant said, and taking away the officer's statement of conclusions and the defendant's statement of conclusions, and looking at what the facts are left, I just don't have a belief beyond a reasonable doubt that the officer has shown me that what was happening out there was unreasonable and imprudent, given all the conditions that I have that are factual. The size of the road, the division of the road, just passing in and of itself is not unreasonable under certain circumstances. And I have not had it shown to me, so the defendant is found not guilty and discharged.
You're still not on topic.
Well, I am on topic, Mr. Lyle.
No, you're not. We're talking about the purchase of night vision.
Yeah, I'll get there right now. Okay. Okay. Just like we all want our SWAT team to be able to see at night, justice is supposed to be blind. Get it? That's the point.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second, to approve item G. Please vote. Motion passes eight to zero. Next item, K.
Item K, to approve the terms and conditions of a second revised and restated Economic Development Incentive Agreement for Tax Rebate for Calendar Years 2024 to 2031 by and between the City of Plano, Texas and Core Weave Incorporated, a Delaware corporation, authorizing its execution by the city manager or his authorized designee, and providing an effective date.
Councilmember Rick Adelli recused himself, so he will not be voting in this, so.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a motion, a second. Rick Horn did the second. All right. Please vote. Motion passes seven yays and one recusal. Item M, as in Mary.
To abandon all right and title and interest in the city, of the city, in and to attractive land situated in the Sanford Beck Survey, Abstract Number Seventy-Three, City of Plano, Collin County, Texas, and being point one-eight-seven acres of Thirteenth Street, abandoning all right, title, and interest of the city in such right-of-way to the abutting property owner, Bayman Cerval LP, to the extent of its interest, authorizing the city manager or his authorized designee to execute any documents deemed necessary to quitclaim the city's interest, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Matthew Jaeger. I serve as the city's real estate manager. This is to abandon approximately eight thousand square feet of Thirteenth Street right-of-way located to the south of a property that is going through the redevelopment process. The appraised value of this right-of-way is ninety-six thousand dollars, give or take. I'm happy to answer any further questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do we have a speaker?
We do. Bill Lyle.
All right.
Mayor Muntz, I won't be reading from the transcripts that found me not guilty on appeal when I was able to get out of the municipal court. I'll actually stay on topic by your definition this time. On September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, many of you all, I don't think Mr. Horn was here yet, but you all adopted, maybe you were, maybe you were, you all adopted a new thoroughfare plan for the downtown streets. And part of that plan was kind of putting the grid back together. And Thirteenth Street has been long interrupted by the railroad track that came in a long time ago. This is to get rid of a piece of Thirteenth Street. The language in the agenda item that you all approved back on September eleventh of twenty-twenty-three says, "The city's policies have long been designed so that development pays its own way," in the subdivision ordinance that allows for relief from unrelated or disproportional public improvements in accordance with the law. However, in response to concerns from property owners, staff is proposing amendments to the subdivision ordinance that commits to the city fully funding street improvements and reimbursing property owners for right-of-way dedication in this area. So they took the subdivision ordinance that handled all this greenfield development, and they changed it for the downtown area because it's almost always going to be disproportionate. Tonight, what's before you is getting rid of a piece of Thirteenth Street, but on the plan, on the map that you all adopted, Thirteenth Street reconnects from where it dead ends at Avenue N today over to Avenue P. But the problem with that is that Avenue P on the south side of Fourteenth Street is about two hundred yards to the west of where Avenue P is on the north side of Fourteenth Street. And so when this area redevelops, what makes sense is for Avenue P to line up on the north and south side of Fourteenth Street. So it doesn't make sense that you would get rid of land that you currently own between P on the south side and P on the north side, because in the future, when you try to put Humpty Dumpty back together again, you're going to have to go buy this land at a bigger price. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, do, can you respond to this, please?
Sure. So this land is located to the east of P Avenue, whereas the area in question Mr. Lyle just brought forward is towards the west. The portion of Thirteenth Street to the west of P Avenue has already been abandoned. This would be staying the course there and abandoning the portion to the east.
That's okay, Bill. We, I, I understand you disagree, but I don't need you to shake your head, Bill.
Well, but factual information is being presented as not factual, I think.
Well, it's.
There's no rebuttal for me. There's no rebuttal for me.
That's right.
Right.
That's correct.
So all I can do is shake my head.
Okay.
So.
Sorry. No, I got you. Go, Maria.
So I, I just have a question. I mean, is, is this something that was already discussed with, I guess, our resident who has raised this concern?
No, ma'am.
Specifically, Mr. Lyle? I see you raised this concern and, and the question so that you could actually discuss this in further details with him?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so this is the first time you're hearing this as well?
Correct.
But prior to that, this, this agenda has been posted for a while. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. It should have been posted last Wednesday at around three o'clock. I don't mean to tread on the city secretary's purview.
And Mr. Lyle is not a stranger when it comes to having questions, right? Is that right? My question is, Mr. Lyle is not a stranger to our, our questions and answers with our city staff. Is that right?
That's correct.
He has posed many, many emails and questions to us multiple times with regard to his issues. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Mr. Lyle as well, no.
So at this point, so what, what you're telling us is that in the, in the best interest of the city at this point, it is better to do this, the abandoning of this piece, of this piece of track of land, in order to be in conjunction and in parallel with the other piece of land that has already been abandoned.
Correct. This has been reviewed by the Engineering Department and the Planning Department before going before the city council.
All right, thank you.
Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. You know, the central argument that I think Mr. Lyle was making is that we are selling land that he believes we will need in the future for a, a road expansion. I know you already touched on the fact that this is on the other side from the side of the street that Mr. Lyle was talking about, but could you please go through how the staff determined that we're not going to need this land in the future?
Sure. So this was part of a site plan that came forward through our planning department. Through the course of that, they would have worked with our engineering department to make sure that site plan comply, complies with all the applicable city plans and city regulations.
Okay, including the thoroughfare plan?
Correct.
Okay. Well, given that, since we're confident that we don't need this land and we're being offered market value for it or appraised value for it, I'll move that we approve this.
I will second.
I have a motion, a second, from Mr. Rick Adelli, and a second by Maria Two. Please vote. Okay. I have a motion pass, six yea, one nay, one abstain. Next item.
Okay, items for individual consideration, public hearing items. Applicants are limited to fifteen minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited, limited to thirty total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until the cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing and consideration of an ordinance to grant the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of zoning case 2024-23 and preliminary site plan 2024-36. Request to amend the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance of the City, Ordinance Number 2015-5-2, as heretofore amended, rezoning six point six acres of land located on the west side of K Avenue, two thousand two hundred and forty feet south of Spring Creek Parkway in the City of Plano, Collin County, Texas, from corridor commercial to single-family residence attached, directing a change accordingly in the official zoning map of the city, providing a penalty clause, a repealer clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, publication clause, and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Executives. I'm Christina Day, the Director of Planning, here to present an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial of a zoning case and the associated preliminary site plan. So we'll get started by looking at an aerial of the property. The property in question is outlined in yellow, and you see the two notice boundaries, a two-hundred-foot notice and a five-hundred-foot notice. This property is zone corridor commercial and is surrounded by other corridor commercial zoning with light industrial across K Avenue to the east. This is a map that shows you the zoning in a broader context. You can see there is a, a specific use permit for a commercial antenna support tower to the south. That's S-54, as well as some agricultural zoning to the south, but it is part of the overall corridor commercial consistent zoning up and down US-75. So this request would rezone the property from corridor commercial to straight zoning, single-family attached. It has, the associated plan shows forty-nine residential lots that would access both K Avenue and Split Trail. This is the preliminary site plan 2024-36 that is submitted and appealed before you with, along with the zoning case. This area is part of the Envision Oak Point Small Area Plan that was passed back in 2018. Small area plans are part of the comprehensive plan, and the guidance there, because of the unique nature and input from those plans, does supersede the land use advice from the comprehensive plan. It does further refine the community's vision for this area. So what does Envision Oak Point say about this area? It provides specific guidance on housing, anticipating a future with multifamily and single-family attached at an eighty-twenty ratio. And the unique area, part of this area, is that it's called Transit Ready, and Transit Ready really anticipated the idea that DART rail stations could be extended here in this, in the pa, in the future. So either rail or bus rapid transit, but some sort of transit would continue on the corridor, the rail corridor line, which is adjacent to this property. So the recommended order of development there is commercial development to essentially hold the land but allow it to retain value for the near term. Then once the transit is determined, a location within a buffer around that transit station, residential development, mixed-use development would be appropriate with the associated transit-oriented development. Since no exact station location has been determined yet, the land use advice for this area is strictly commercial development. That is consistent with the existing corridor commercial zoning. It is in one of the four quadrants that is also in Envision Oak Point. This is the western quadrant, which, again, talks about the preservation of land in this area for potential transit station. That doesn't mean it shouldn't develop. It just means that we really want, like, lower lot coverage, redevelopable, easy-to-assemble uses in this area. And then it also is asking for east-west connections through this area to provide a better access through and to K Avenue. So the request before you this evening does not meet a number of the items related to the community vision map in Envision Oak Point, in the Transit Ready character-defining elements. It meets three out of four of those. There is slightly less open space being proposed, so it does not meet that function. There's another issue with this request in that the compatibility is a concern related to adjacent uses. There is a religious facility adjacent, but there's also service contractors, and I, I mean, really in the vicinity, not immediately adjacent. There are service contractors in the area, truck, bus leasing, retail, mini warehouse, public storage. There is a mobile home park across both Split Trail and the DART rail line. And then immediately adjacent, you have the, again, commercial antenna tower. So one of the complications with this is that the tower would typically require a setback for residential. Because of the height of the tower, it calculates out to a hundred and sixty-one feet. The plan before you shows that setback being incorporated. However, because this is not a planned development district, it's not a requirement. It's something that the applicant has voluntarily asked to do as part of this planning effort. Residential adjacency standards are also an issue because if, if future adjacencies occur due to redevelopment, those commercial uses would need to provide a setback where, if they're proposing a residential, a, a use that's marked with residential adjacency in the zoning ordinance. So that could mean as much as a hundred and fifty-foot setback for uses that could be a nuisance to these residences. So it really changes the character of the area. Access to the property is something that we've also discussed. The primary entrance is from K Avenue, and due to the nature of lot splits in the area that exist and ownership, the access that was planned off of the, at the median break is not accessible because it would require a shared drive in that location. So anyone that's traveling northbound on K Avenue will need to make a U-turn. This is a, requires a variance to the street design standards through the Engineering Department for this arrangement. So you can see here a little better, the original design of the site was to include this shared driveway access. The property to the north is, has limited depth because of floodplain in the area, so the shared driveway is helpful to providing access to both these properties. So this is also within the environmental health area. The council did pass changes to the zoning ordinance relating to this policy, but this case was submitted prior. So we did review it under this policy, and there was a noise study included in your packet. It did not find the proposed development consistent with the EHA guidelines. Responses. We have one in support. That is a property owner to the south, and one in opposition, the property owner to the north. We additionally had four more responses, one in support and three in opposition, and you can see on the map the location of those responses. So to sum, summarize, the applicant is proposing to rezone from corridor commercial to single-family attached. The proposal is not consistent with the land use guidance in the Envision Oak Point plan, and there are other issues outside of that, including compatibility, impact on surrounding properties, and site access issues. properties, and site access issues. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, after consideration, did recommend denial of this case by a vote of eight to zero. That would require a supermajority vote out of this body, which is six council members. And the petitioner has also appealed the preliminary site plan, so we're looking for a motion on both the zoning case and the preliminary site plan. The applicant does have slides and a presentation for you as well. I'm available for questions you might have.
Thank you, Christina. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Day, for a great presentation. Just real quick, again, from Envision Oak Point, the priorities we had there for this particular parcel was basically a small transit-oriented exit, if you will. That's if DART proceeds up there with the rail or whatever, which we can't tell from this time. The second part was restricted to commercial, correct?
That is correct.
Which was compatible with the surrounding area.
Yes.
Right? And the third part was residential.
Yes, if, it gave guidance that anticipated changes in land use based on transit. So if transit were to come in the future, it wanted, we kind of wanted to be prepared for that, and that's the impetus behind the Transit Ready designation.
And then, I think it was three meetings ago, we aligned the commercial corridor with EH1, is that correct?
Yes.
It's about three meetings.
It is, yes, yes.
Three council meetings ago. And within that EH1, we severely restricted residential construction because of the health impacts.
That is correct. The more adjacent property is restricted.
Great, okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. We'll start with the applicant, Sappo Nali.
Good evening. Sorry, I have to use my laptop, I wasn't prepared to print it. All right, good evening, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of this project. And certainly, the description of the project had a lot of good things that I would have to skip through because you already mentioned it, so allow me for some shuffling while I'm talking. The description of the project is basically forty-nine townhouses, modern townhouses with three-bedroom apartment, three bedrooms, two baths, roughly speaking, 2,000 square foot with a backyard and two-car front garages, and basically a price tag between below 600K, between 500 and 550 and 600. Basically, it's, you know, affordable yet elegant housing for the first project of this kind in this area. The project is expected to be completed in twenty-four months from acquiring building permit if we're ever approved. So I'm going to jump, where is the, oh, here it is. Okay, so since already this was reviewed, where's the location? I'm going to skip through this. And as you see, of course, this is the lot, as was in the bottom, there is a worship place, the church, and above it, there is the, another worship place is the mosque. And of course, north of it is the empty lot owned by our neighbors who have a creek running through it, and then they developed a very nice office space in the north of it. So going through this, you will see that the, the plan was decided that we fit between two residential areas. There is residential areas to the east of us, residential areas to the west of us, and to the east, north is apartments, and in the south, there is already existing, the big project for the farm that grew in the southeast. And we see this as a potential connection between residential areas. So I'm going to jump through this quickly to basically show you, these are all existing housing, and these are future housing, and then this is the area where our lot is, and then this would be connecting the fabric of the residential between the east and the west. So it's not a foreign body into this. In fact, the next one, which is in the north, are the commercial areas. So basically, just to go back, this is not a, we are not trying to introduce a foreign body into this, we're in fact trying to connect the fabric of the residential. And we intentionally designed this not as a gated community, it is an open community with no gates, there is pedestrian path, and of course cars, bikes, to connect the east and the west, as she mentioned, that the connectivity would be needed just in case the transit station would be built in the future. We understand, of course, that there's difficulties with the transit station. In fact, we communicated with the, with the DART, and we got an email from them that mentioned that there is not going to be any, in their calendar right now, there is no station to be built right now, other than what they have in the silver line here. And here's the letter, this is the letter, and I'm just highlighting the area where they, they say that currently there's no official plans to build it. So understanding that, but the, this was the basic of the Envision Plan, which was built in 2018, or approved in 2018, about seven years ago, that, that this area would be rendered Transit Ready because there's going to be a train station. But right now, we know that the train station is not, in the, in the next ten years, going to be available, or five years, God knows when. So rendering this area as a Transit Ready without the main reason for calling it so is, is, is a little bit something that the city needs to reconsider. So, having said that, I'm going to jump into the seven items, the, the other six items left that the city have mentioned as a, a potential problems with our proposal. And also, I want to mention that, that the commercial need for 2016, 2018 timeframe was much higher than it is today. In general, there is reduced demand on commercial spaces, and, and to the opposite of that, the residential specifically in Plano is soaring. We don't have any housing for middle-income families to move in, that's why they're moving to other cities around us. So, so the, this assumption that was the plan, the Envision Plan, which is, by the way, is a great plan, I'm originally an architect with background in planning and urban design. So I understand this great effort went into this plan, I studied it really, really, it's a put-together plan, but I'm talking about a micro-change in a plan that makes it respond to the market conditions. The market condition now is, we need housing, there's less demand, in particularly in this area, in, in commercial spaces. Our neighbor in the north have a very nice facility that he built with, with very low occupancy rate, which, which tells you that this area, because it's far away from major intersections like Spring Creek and, and K Avenue, it's not in high demand. Again, this could change, but it is certainly a concern that this is not really, and also the landlord of this land that we're trying to buy here, representing by Mr. Jim who's sitting here, said that we never got a call from, from anybody who want to develop a commercial project in this six acres for the last eight years. They're always getting for residential. So it, it just tells you that this area is a, is a part of the fabric of the residential to the east and to the west. So, so, all right, so going, and then the area, the, the point of the tower, we, as mentioned, we put the tower, we left 163 feet distance from the tower. The tower is 93 feet tall, but it's requested 163 feet distance in case it collapses, and that means that we wasted .83 acre of our lot as a green space, just to leave it, just to keep a safe distance from the tower. Also, from the, the, the access problem, which is a very important one, there is three safe access to our lot. If you're coming in Split Trail from the north to the south, then you will be making, from the north to the south, then you'll be making a left turn in Split Trail. If you are going from the south to the north, you'll be making a right turn. If you're coming from the north in K Avenue heading south, you're going to make a left turn directly into our lot, and so there is three safe ways to enter the lot without having to make the U-turn. Plus, if the U-turn is a concern, we can always put restriction in that U-turn so that cars can use the further U-turn, which is 350 feet, which will not require a variance because they indicated that our, from the U-turn to the entrance is 216, and the recommended is 250. So we can always cancel that U-turn if necessary. However, I need to mention something very important, and let me see if I have the plan for it. Yes. Okay, so this was our original submission for this. When you can make a direct U-turn into the lot with a 200-feet driveway, which basically meet all safety requirements, no U-turn is necessary, no variance is requested. We, as she mentioned, that certainly, we, we, because of the idea of having a shared entrance with our neighbor, this, they ask us to develop another plan to push it south further, which we did, and that's, the current submission was the one that's pushed down. But the original plan was very, very meeting all variance concerns, other than the fact that we were forced to, not forced, sorry, should I use that, but we were asked to have to share this with, with the neighbor. In fact, I went and talked to the neighbor to see if they're willing to sell us their lot so that we can share both of them as a residential, and we have talks about it, and we actually shared this with the city as well, that we are, if, if this zoning is approved, we are interested to look into this three-acre lot so that we have one shared interest for both residential, and then we don't have that problem, and we keep that, you know, layout that is perfectly safe for, for, for the development. So now, the other issue about the sound, we basically conducted a sound study, and the, from a professional experts in the, in town, that they basically, I could actually show you, yeah, here it is. So basically, this is their sound study, which indicated that only one building out of the eight is exceeding the limit by slight difference, and that they recommended three things. One is to use bricks, two is double glazing, three is not to have any balconies, which we will not have any of the balconies in the entire development. We are all going to use bricks for the, for all the buildings, not just the impacted building, and we also will use the double glazing throughout the entire. So we don't have any problem, the recommendation said that you can meet it, it's very easy to control the noise inside that building, it's, it's engineering-wise, it's doable. Similarly, the, the, the debris and the, and the, the stuff coming from the mulch area. The mulch area, and me, I would show you also another slide here that shows you that, oh, here it is, okay. So basically, from that center of the arrows, this is where the mulch is produced, that's producing the hazard and the smell and all that. Our lot is actually a little bit further more than existing residential areas in there. So controlling the, the, the quality of the air inside the buildings, that's easy to do through air conditioning systems, we can always handle that engineering-wise. Outside, of course, we cannot do that. But this is not only applicable to us, applicable to all these residential area, and if we do the, the, the city, the big project in the farm, the wind will take this to it as well. So I think the, the issue here is not to put restrictions on the residential areas, it's to actually address the problem ahead, which is, there is engineering techniques to make these places, use sprinkler systems to keep them wet so it doesn't fly over the place, you put certain covers, there is a lot of engineering techniques that help these guys keep that hazard away from all the neighborhood around it. The problem is not us, the problem is this place, it's not us, and we are similar or further distance from, like all the others, the residential areas around it, as you see on this. So the very last point that I want to make, which is the, the open spaces. The open spaces, okay, I'm sorry for that, ah, here it is, okay. So in our calculation, the open spaces were more than 10%. However, we were, we take the numbers that they calculated at heart, they basically said it's .83%, so we are off by one and a half percent. It is incredibly easy to change, modify this layout to make it 10%. In fact, in addition to the 10%, we have one acre of green space left for the tower that is actually, if you look at the map, there is a lot of green spaces in this place, in this, in this layout, and for the other layout as well, that, that we originally submitted. So, so having, you know, presented all this, I, I want to leave you with a few comments at, at, at the end. So basically, we appealed to the City Council to have an open mind about accommodating changes to and to respond to the microeconomics of the market around our lot, since no commercial development is economically work, is economically appealing. Approving our request would help provide needed housing for families that are continually moving to Plano, and such, such flexibility would help transform the area and strengthen the Envision Plan, not weaken it. All concerns raised by the P&amp;Z committee is very well respected and can be mitigated via engineering solution to address them all, access, noise, open spaces, telecom tower, et cetera. If zoning request is approved, we are willing to work with the P&amp;Z team to, to improve the layout as necessary, and we are open to add any stipulations that would need to be, to acquire the building permit. So basically, voting with us, voting against this, you risk delaying the use of such a valuable six acres of Plano land, possibly for another five to 10 years from today.
One second.
And we, and, you know, basically, if you vote for it, you would be helping 49 homeowners, 150 people to move in to these elegant small-town houses. In, in very quick, short time, we can finish the half of a project in 12 months, all the project in 24, from the time we acquired the building permit. So basically, this is what Plano needs, it needs hope.
Thank you, Mr. Alley.
Thank you.
Maria, did you have a question?
I, I do, but not for the owner. I actually have a question for our city attorney with regard to the appeal process.
Okay.
So my understanding is that in, in a, in a case where it's being appealed to City Council through a denial from, from P&amp;Z, that we actually have to look at the original plan, right? So if there is a modification or a proposal for change, we cannot consider that as part of the appeal. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. If, if there are engineering solutions that the applicant wishes you, wishes to be considered, changes to what was presented to P&amp;Z, then the proper course is to remand it to P&amp;Z and let them consider the revised plan.
Thank you, that's all the question I have.
May I have a, a quick comment in what you just asked? We are talking about one plan here. The other plan that I said is, we started with that, but we ended up with a plan that we submitted. So we don't have two or three plans, it's only one that is submitted to the City Council at the end. Yeah.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, based on, there are actually some changes from what you presented to P&amp;Z, moving the entrance, doing a couple of other things there. So with that in mind, I would make a motion that we do remand it.
Let me, let me finish with the speakers. Hang on.
I'll keep it in mind.
I have to, I have to do that. So let's, Mr. Kristin want to speak? Okay. So we're still in the public hearing. I will tell you, Ms. Kristin, Mr. Alley just took all your time, so if you'll, you'll be brief, I appreciate it.
I can be very brief.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that the person that owns it now bought it in 2008. And he bought it because it was commercial. And he bought it for his business. And he operated his business there till 2017. At that time, he's in the construction of streets for Plano, Richardson, all the cities that are growing. And the city said, well, you can't park your equipment there anymore. So he went out into county and bought county land and moved it. But what's happened is that, as we've studied it, the creek separates this property. There's property to the north, and that should be commercial. And it is commercial. When you come south, though, you hit the mosque, and then you get our piece, and then you get another church. It really makes sense to have 49 homes there. They're needed, they're affordable, and they can be occupied quickly. All these cities need them. But I just want to give you the background as to why he bought it and how he doesn't have the use anymore. And we ask that you reconsider it because we think the residential works taking everything south of the creek. I don't know if you've seen it. That creek is big and pretty, but that separates it to the north, commercial to the south. Excuse me. Would be great for homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, Bill Lyle.
I will not need my laptop anymore, right? Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, council. First, I want to respond to Maria. Maria, it felt like I was in the municipal court for a second. There you were, cross-examining a witness, leading the witness, trying to get testimony about me and what I had or didn't have with no chance for rebuttal. And I think you probably believe this. I think I probably did more to prepare for this meeting, maybe than you. I probably worked harder and asked staff more questions. I'm going to get there, Mr.
No, no, no. You get there now, okay?
If I was standing here talking about helicopters flying over my head, you would be quiet because I've watched you do it to a crazy person.
This is an agendized item.
I know. I'm going to get there.
If you don't get there right now, I'm going to ask you to leave, sit down.
You can ask me. I'm not done. So anyway.
I'm going to ask, you either, well, then you're done. When you come back, speak on the subject. Now. I'll close the public hearing, confine the comments to the council. Okay, Rick, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Based on the new facts introduced by the speaker, I would recommend make a motion that we remand it back to planning and zoning for review.
Second.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I think what we looked at here was a change to the entrance, access, talk to the neighbor, noise, and the open space. Those would require, again, that we remand that back to, with your new plans and your new strategy, back to P and Z. I would endorse that remanding it.
Okay. So I have a motion, a second, to reman, item one, back to P and Z to consider the changes that have been offered to council. Everybody okay with that? Please vote. So I have a motion, seven yays and one abstain. Thank you. Item number two.
Item number two, stream bank stabilization assessment results presentation.
Caleb Thornhill, Director of Engineering. So tonight, we're going to talk about the stream bank stabilization assessment results. I know it's a mouthful. But before I get into the results, just a kind of a history of where we were and how we got to here. So we actually presented this back in August of 2022, a preliminary open. And I will say, there is no action tonight. This is just a presentation of the results. This would have been on the preliminary open, but we got busy on that. So just a information. So we began the assessment in December. That first spring of 2023, we walked approximately 30 miles. And then this last, last year, fall and spring, we finished the remaining 27, or I'm sorry, 97 miles. And we have been compiling that data. And our team, Allison and Russell, have been reviewing those results. And we have now gotten to a point where we wanted to present those to you guys. So here's all 97 miles. You can see the bluish color is the first 30, and the red is the 97 that we completed. So just an idea of what we actually looked for when we went out and walked these miles. So this is your traditional house adjacent to a creek. So a couple of the items that we'd look at, is there a threat to the structure? What's the distance between the bank and the erosive area to the structure? Excuse me. A channel orientation, is that on the outside of a bend? Is it a more highly erosive area than on the inside? The chance of failure, what is the soil condition? Is there any vegetation? What's the bank height? Is it extremely high, eight or 10 feet? Or is it closer to less than three feet? And is it in erosion hazard zone? So again, this looks at several qualities of the slope and the bank. Is it vegetated? Is it, the height of it, is it made of dirt? Is it rock? And then the bank stability, again. Just, so we look at all these different components. We compile that, we assign a score to it, and we put that into the database. Oh, and threat trees. I'm sorry, missed the last one there. So this is a map of all the miles we walked. Each of these colors represents a different component. And I don't expect you to see all of it. But the red is, I'm sorry, let me get to my notes real quick. Make sure I'm saying the right thing. So the orange is areas where identified where there is erosion. Red are structures. So it could be a gabian wall, it could be a pilot channel, a concrete pilot channel, it could be a brick wall. And then green are going to be aerial crossings, so like a utility. And so we have all this compiled in our database. We can go into that system, click on the line, and then we can actually go to a report and photos that were documented from the walks at each of these locations. So through these walks, we identified over 3,000 areas that were experiencing erosion. 70% of that is on city-owned or responsibility. And that's per the Platt language. 24% is private owner, and 6% of that is HOA. The 24% of private owner includes residential and commercial. And then the 3,000 sites, the one thing I wanted to touch on that, that is not properties. That is the location where we identified erosion. That erosion may span multiple properties, but be identified as one location. So in the scoring, what we did is this is from a zero to 100-point scale, 100 being very low risk, to red, or zero to 20 being critical, where we feel like there needs to be something done immediately. And so we've tried to put the scores in those boxes to determine what projects we should be looking at or focusing on. So you can see here is a breakdown of the scoring. 1% fell within that zero to 20. It's just over 40 locations. 32 of those are responsibility of the city. You can see the majority of the locations that we did identify erosion fall within the 61 to 80, which would be, we would consider low priority or low risk. 17% were in the 81 to 100. So nearly two-thirds of the erosive areas we found were in the low to very low. But the zero to 60 made up just right around 800. So some examples of low scores are zero to 20. You can see on the left, that is a location that scored a seven and a half. That's an existing bag wall that has failed. We have exposed root from a tree. We have a very high, steep bank. We have soil with very little, if any, vegetation. So that's what's going to deem that to be a low score. Similar on the right, you've got dirt, very little vegetation, you've got some tree roots exposed. You've got some failing infrastructure on the right with the concrete riprap that has exposed an undercut underneath it. And then the other component here on the left that is circled is a sanitary sewer line that is now exposed from the bank receding. So both of these would score very low scores. So from a high perspective, you can see the location on the left has a very distinct bank. You can see the person there from a scale perspective, not necessarily next to a house. It is next to a trail. So this one would score a relatively low score. You can see the one on the right. Again, it's not necessarily next to a house or a structure, but we do have infrastructure that is cracking, failing, will likely soon fall into the channel or the stream there. So some medium ones. Again, picture on the left, a very high, steep bank, not necessarily impacting a structure today. Will be impacting likely the fences adjacent to that area. So that is a concern, but that's what puts it in the median. The location on the right impacting a trail, not necessarily a house, but it also is a concern for that area. And you can see some low scores. So the one on the left, we already have a gabian structure. There are some areas that need to be repaired. One thing I did want to point out here, you'll see at the bottom now that there is no cost. We asked the consultant to only give us cost estimates for any projects that scored a 60 or below. So anything in that low to very low risk, we asked them not to give us a score so we felt like at this time, we would not be doing those projects. The one on the right, you see a bank. It's around, you know, three, four, five feet tall. The tree roots maybe not fully exposed yet, but it's getting to that point. So this is why it's on the lower end of this realm, but not at a risk, a low risk today. Excuse me. And then the last two on these is the very low. Again, we have some infrastructure here. We have some rock riprap on the left. We have some gabian structures on the right. There is some erosion, but none of the components are failing at this point. So they're going to score an erosive score, but it's going to be very, very low risk. We also considered the aerial crossings, so bridges, sanitary sewer crossings. You can see a low score on the left. We've got some erosion near the piers. We've got some erosion underneath the bridge, but not endangering the infrastructure. You can see on the right, that's one that is critical. That area that you see exposed, that's kind of got the yellowish tint, that is an area that used to be covered by the bank that is now exposed. So that is one that we consider critical. So from a cost perspective, like I said, we did not provide cost for anything 61 or above, just the critical, high, and median. And so I've broken out the critical on the left, and then the high and the medium have combined on the right. So total for critical is just over $10 million. But you'll see towards the bottom of that, you'll see the city location and the city parks makes up right at, or real close to 7 million of that. 2.8 for commercial, 650 residential, and there's 150 for HOA. The high to median, you can see those numbers, total's about 150. So in totality, they came up with around $160 million of repairs. About 91 of that is associated with city or city parks locations. A couple of projects that we've done before. So this is before and after. Again, you see the steep bank, you see the trees, roots exposed. You see a deck there to the left, close to the house. So this is a gabian structure that we came in and put in, approximately $1 million. Another before and after, again, see a very steep bank. Actually, this one is interesting because you see the bank actually cutting underneath itself. So it's almost cantilevered. And this is an after picture, a gabian structure, gabian mattress, restoration of that bank, and approximately 1.6 million. I've shown this slide before, I think back in August of 2022. This is what our neighboring cities or peer cities do. It's essentially all over the map as far as what they do. Plano is based on the Platt language. Dallas doesn't really have a policy, but they have used money in the past for erosion projects. Richardson has some contribution. Commercial, they split 50/50. You can see Carlin's a little different. Frisco is a no across the board. McKinney has a safety component. So there's no real consistency. It's really up to the council and the policy decision. So what we did is we combined all this zero to 60 scores. I mentioned it's around the $91 million for city and city parks. What we did is we estimated how long it would take us to finish $91 million, including inflation every single year. We projected that out. It's approximately 20 years to finish $91 million worth of projects. That's about $9 million a year of projects that we would be doing. What we did do is we looked at if we added residential only, that adds to that. And then you can see further down if we add residential and HOA. And then at the very last, if we do everything, it's approximately 15 million a year. So I wanted to show you this. Again, this is a slide you guys have seen before. We've had a few updates to it, though. So the red line in the middle, that is where our rate was July 2020. We had a rate increase in July of 2020. And the $4.15, that represents the average for our residential tier. We had, at the July date in 2020, we had three tiers. We now have four tiers. So in July 2020, we introduced the fourth tier, and the average rate for residential was $4.77. In November of that same year, we had another increase and raised that to $5.40. So the furthest right red line, the $8.94, that is if we addressed the $91 million for city and city parks locations. And you can see over there on the averages, the $4.36, that's the average for the metroplex, for the areas that we included. Similar for commercial. Again, prior to July, we were 0.075 cents per 100 square feet of impervious area. We increased that to 0.086, and now it sits at 0.115. If we increased it similar for the 91 million for city and city parks, it would go up to 0.19. That's a 65% increase. So what we tried to show here, and I know there's a lot of lines and colors and everything, and I apologize for that. I couldn't think of a good way to show it to you. But if you assume our current rate at the very bottom is $5.40, if we add the city and parks, that increases it by 65%. And that will add $3.54 to the rate. If we add residential to that, that adds another $1.63. Add HOA, it adds 54 cents. And commercial, it adds $1.41. So I wanted to show you kind of those tiers on what the adds would be for that. And again, the city parks, or the city and city parks, would bring our current rate up to $8.94. And this is similar for commercial. And if I'm going too fast, tell me to stop. So next steps. I know there are some speakers tonight that would like to speak to you, wanted to receive your feedback. I know a lot of you council members, not a lot, but half of you guys will be leaving us. And so wanted to give you an opportunity to see this. It's to y'all's kudos that we're here tonight. But we'll come back later this summer and present again to the new council, very similar, based on tonight's feedback. And then hopefully this fall, establish a policy and start moving forward. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. We have some speakers, so we're going to do that first.
All right. Our first speaker is Brent Emke.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brent Emke, president of the Hills of Indian Creek HOA, an HOA of a hundred-and-twenty-two single-family residences in West Plano. I'm here to speak on behalf of our neighborhood where forty, where twenty of our houses back up to a natural creek. Over forty years ago, when our subdivision was built, the city and the developer assigned long-term erosion responsibility to an HOA that didn't exist. At that time, this may have seemed to be a reasonable decision. But over forty-plus years, massive development has occurred around us. The city now discharges storm water from the roads, alleys, parking lots, and even parts of Willow Bend into our creek. The volume of water has grown well beyond what the creek was ever meant to handle. As a result, erosion has significantly increased, caused not by nature alone, but by citywide development and infrastructure decisions. Yet the cost and the responsibility of fixing this erosion is still being placed on the HOA. Or as we've seen in other locations of the city, even individual homeowners. This is not just unfair, it's unsustainable. We already pay monthly drainage fees to the city to manage stormwater infrastructure. This should include the full stormwater path from the street to the storm drain into and including the creeks. The city's data shows that only six percent of Plano's one-hundred-and-thirty-eight miles of streams are assigned to HOA. Yet those few neighborhoods bear a disproportionate burden of erosion caused by runoff outside of their community. To put it simply, this isn't a problem we caused, and it's not that one that we can solve alone. We respectfully ask the council place responsibility for residential stream bank maintenance and erosion control where it belongs with the city. This would align the intent of the drainage fees, ensure consistent management, and treat all residents fairly. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Joey Seven.
I was going to say good morning, but good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Joey Seven. But before I get started, I'd like to say thank you to Russell and Allison for their help educating us on stream bank erosion. I mean, it's major understanding taking place. My name is Joey Seven. I'm at twenty-five-twenty Naperton Drive in Plano. I'm here tonight representing the Estates at Wooded Cove. Estates at Wooded Cove is a small subdivision comprised of a hundred-and-fifty-eight homes here in Plano. Construction began in nineteen ninety-eight. Our neighborhood has a drainage waterway that passes through it. This waterway is commonly referred to as a drainage ditch or tributary that eventually flows into Russell Creek. At the northern end of the two-thousand-foot waterway, there is, there are two seven-foot concrete conduits, seven feet tall and wide, that feed drainage water from two-hundred-and-forty acres, two-hundred-and-forty acres north of us, that's not in our subdivision. That's the residential development from driveways, streets and homes located north and outside of our subdivision. Residents have actually reported several years that during heavy rainstorms, the rushing flow, rushing water flows dangerously fast and strong. Now, the designers of this drainage system must have known that the water at times would be powerful and destructive, because they installed diffusers to reduce the water flow force damage. They even also reinforced an area around one street called Scenic Drive that is located within the Estates at Wooded Cove to prevent damage to this bridge from erosion. As previously discussed to the city council, there are two sites of erosion and real problem within the Estates of Wooded Cove. One of them now is more serious than the other. According to Engineering Department, we've talked about it. Matter of fact, Russell and Allison have been out numerous times to see it. Due to erosion in the bank, the waterway is about four feet away from the homeowner's fence, and it's a steep drop-off from there. But there are three points that I'd like to highlight regarding this site. Number one, our subdivision site plan states that our HOA is in charge of maintaining one side of the waterway, while the city of Plano is in charge of the other side.
Twenty seconds.
Andrews Elementary, which sits on the side of the waterway, or city maintained by the city, there's twenty-four inches of drain that feeds directly into it and probably contributes to the damage behind the homeowner. No one has provided a clear definition of what maintenance means. We don't think it means that our HOA is responsible for fixing stream bank and that two-hundred-and-forty acres north of us is causing the damage. So we asked the city of Plano to please create a policy where that you can basically include this in your infrastructure for dealing with waterways both below ground and above ground. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am speaking on behalf of the Hills of Prestonwood as well with Brent. And I'm a homeowner in the Hills of Prestonwood. I've been there since two thousand two. I'm on the Architectural Control Committee alongside our HOA board, and I've been a Realtor for over twenty-three years. My home on Pelican Bay backs up to the creek. At the time we moved in our home in two thousand two, the shops at Willow Bend, storage buildings, apartments were built, all upstream of our HOA. The city approved all of these developments, which contain multiple buildings, parking lots, and basically a lot of concrete, resulting in increased water flow into the creek before it arrives to our neighborhood. Our properties back into the creek have witnessed the water level increasingly, increasing exponentially from rain runoff. We've even witnessed whitewater, if you can believe that. As a result, the stream, the stream bank eroded, encroaching upon our property lines. This has caused failure of our retaining walls, and we have dealt with huge trees falling because the roots were exposed from the erosion. We have spent our own dollars removing fallen trees and repairing fences and retaining walls. The factors contributing to the erosion are not in our control. Most of the water flows in the creek, does not come from our HOA. Also of note, the city owns the other side of the stream bank from our HOA. The creek existed before any development in the area. The surrounding developments also have increased their runoff, resulting in creek erosion. To hold an HOA or person solely responsible for the repair of the erosion along the creek they live on is unfair. In January of two thousand twenty-three, the city made an offer to our HOA to take ownership of that property. As I mentioned, I'm a Realtor, and I listed a neighbor's house along this creek in the spring of two thousand twenty-three. An offer substantially above the tax assessed value was made and accepted. However, during the buyer's due diligence, the buyer backed out, and one of the reasons cited was the uncertainty of the ownership and responsibility of the erosion remediation. I urge you, the city management, to honor the January two thousand twenty-three offer that the city made and take ownership of the creek lots. I also ask that the council seriously consider changing city policy and take responsibility for creek erosion repairs regardless of what the plat map says. Thank you, and I appreciate your time this evening.
The last speaker is M.A. Clock.
Lisa, can I yield to the member that didn't get signed up today? And I will waive my time for her.
Just go up there together.
Okay. That'll be fun.
Y'all hold hands.
Do we have to?
Hi, I'm M.A. Clock. My friends call me Mary Agnes. I saw you all in two thousand twenty-two when Brent and I spoke with you all about the situation in our HOA. I'm the one that stood up here and said, look at the document we're giving you, and please check for the proofing errorers that were in it. And I think you were supposed to get those back to me, and I never heard from you. So anyway, if anybody needs a new edition of that, that document, we're happy to provide you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Audrey Gillette. I've, well, I am a Realtor also. I'm actually the Realtor who lost the deal, working with Nancy. My buyer just could not feel comfortable. And that is something we need to think about. We've been talking about this since two thousand twenty-three. And someone coming into the neighborhood, we've got to, they get a disclosure. Does the seller tell them something's going on here, or do they not? If they don't, down the road, someone's going to get sued. Seller might get sued. They're not going to stop there, because if the seller doesn't have any money, they're going to come after the HOA, which has no money. And then, of course, maybe the city of Plano. So it is a problem in real estate. So that is one point I want to make. I've lived there twenty-four years. The first ten years, eight years, ten years, I didn't see any water issues. I don't even live on the creek, yet I have major water issues behind me that I've had to spend the money shore it up. But something has changed. The first eight, ten years, I was just completely oblivious that there was a problem. But in the later years, we've got erosion problems. And what's changed? Willow Bend came in in two thousand and one, it was completed. They were building it, I would say, in the nineties. In the nineties, late eighties, early nineties, we had RTC, the Resolution Trust, huge savings and loan failures. Real estate was not a good place to be. And there were, in the beginning of our neighborhood, at that point, there was about twenty homes under construction. There was still a hundred lots not sold. So people that came in, they didn't come in buying these million-dollar homes. They have taken care of this neighborhood and done everything that they can, and now we've got this problem that, what is going to happen with values from a Realtor's standpoint? But like I said, the first ten years we were there, this did not happen. We have watched Willow Bend. We have watched the storage buildings come in. We have watched more shopping come in. We've got apartments. That is all upstream from us. This is not our water. So we've got a homeowners association.
Twenty seconds.
Hundred-and-twenty-two people, of which twenty or so are on the creek.
And I'm one of them. Actually, mine is one of three properties that was a high priority. Don't know what it is with the new study, but with the previous study, it was a high. Still is there. I can't repair it.
Yeah, it's just too much to put on homeowners that have been here for many, many years. A lot of us, I will tell you, are seniors, and hopefully we can get some resolution, because if they, you, you want new people to come in, you want some younger families to come in. And how do you sell a home to someone with this possibly becoming their problem?
Okay. Thank you. So this is, this is not, it's not an action item. And so we, this was the first time that we, we got a report on some actual possibilities for us to pursue, to look into. So if, I think if we just want to give some suggestions to staff, we're going to bring this back when we have the new council. So Mayor Protim, I'll let you start.
I just have questions for, for our staff.
Okay.
So with regard to some of the comments that were made about the different, different HOA that, that's, that were commented, are they listed, any of them listed in the, in the critical section of our study?
I'll have to see if Allison and Russell can look it up, the current database.
Because it would seem like we only have about, did you say about twelve percent?
I think it was six percent.
Six percent? And that's including everybody, right?
It was just HOA that was the six percent.
Only one HOA.
Only, okay. So there, one HOA location had a critical score.
Okay. I mean, that would be something, I mean, I think, anyway, that's not a question. So I'm, I'm done with my question.
Okay. All right. Brent?
Thank you, Mayor. And as, as you wisely pointed out, yeah, there's going to be at least four new people making the next determination on this. But I, I'd just like to go back, you know, I think we had talked about it, you know, way back when, is at that point, there were some questions as to, you know, whether it was city or whether it wasn't, because it was coming from someplace else, it was caused by other development. And I believe the majority of us that were here did agree that whatever we do, we should err in the favor of our homeowners. So I still have that position. I think, if I recall, you presented something similar to that tonight, except, you know, that in essence, we're all paying for it, we would all be paying for it through the increased drainage fee, which, for me, I would be fine with that. I, I think if, if it could be spread out, you know, where the city and everybody was able to contribute, because it may not be me, or it may not be us now, but it could be in the future. And I think we, we just need to clarify it. Someone needs to take responsibility for it. And I, I think we're headed in the right direction to make it workable, so I would encourage you to, to stay on that. But if there is anything critical, like the young lady was here speaking earlier that we need to take care of, I would say, let's, let's err in their favor and get that taken care of. That's just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions and maybe a comment. And by the way, I'll start by saying, Mary Agnes, my apologies for not getting back to you. I do my best to get back to everybody, but.
I understand.
There is a lot that goes on in this job that pays a thousand dollars a month, but I do apologize for, for not getting back. No, in all seriousness, we are. No, it, it's, it's a labor of love for all of us, and I aspire to get back to everybody. So my apologies, Mary Agnes, did not get back to you. Anyway, but anyway, so getting back to some questions. So Caleb, my, my understanding, both from our previous discussion and from your presentation, is that there, there are some places, obviously, where the city owns land, and that's clearly our responsibility. Then there are others where, based on the plat at the time that development occurred, for private property, in some cases, the city took on that responsibility, and in some cases, the city didn't, which is to say, there's some private property that the city has said, yes, this is our responsibility to maintain, and other private property that the city said at the time of development in the plat, this is not our responsibility, either the HOA or a private property owner is going to maintain that. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And I'm just trying to figure out, was there a rhyme or reason, like, was there a guiding principle, you know, regarding, well, you know, if these criteria are met, then the city is going to take responsibility under the plat? If they're not, then it's the HOA or the private property owner? Or was it just more ad hoc?
Yeah, so I don't have the answer to that. And we actually had a discussion earlier. We know of a handful of locations and how they were selected, why they were chosen, why they were did. I don't have that information. All that stuff has since left. That happened in the nineties and early two thousands.
And, and there's nothing that's just readily apparent to you that's different about the ones that the plat says the city takes care of?
You know, based on the information we have today, there, there's nothing that says a, an house was hanging over a creek or anything like that. We, I don't know the rhyme or reason for it.
And thank you for that, Caleb. And I know you weren't there at the time. I'm just, what, what I'm getting at there is, it seems to me that, you know, almost by the luck of the draw, you know, some people maybe have, the plat says the city takes care of it, others don't, and this decision obviously won't be made by me or, or, you know, three others of us who won't be here. But I just wanted to highlight that for the consideration of the council members who will be making this decision after, you know, some of us leave the council. Also, you know, a, a point that I'd like to, to make is that one of the speakers talked about the city making an offer to take ownership. I do think that where the city takes over, you know, installing erosion control improvements, I think it would be a positive for the city to own the land that we're installing the erosion improvements on, you know, and, and of course, to, to own the improvements themselves, the erosion control improvements that, that the city expensed taxpayer funds to install, you know, should that be the, the decision that the next council makes. But I, I do think that, you know, given that we have some private. given that we have some private property where the city is saying, under the plat, "Yes, we'll take care of it," others where we're not for some reason, and there's no obvious distinction between the two, I think that, that that would counsel in favor of, of trying to protect the homeowners as Councilmember Smith was talking about.
Shelby?
Yes, thank you, Caleb. First, can we advance two slides, please? I just want to note a correction. Sorry, maybe three slides? Plus animations? Yeah, right here. Under the HOA Responsibility column, we do need an asterisk, asterisk there for Plano, and that's better for the advisement of the next council.
Sure.
I've been tracking this issue for a while. And I have to think especially, pardon me, especially back in the 90s, when these plats said it would either be private property or HOA responsibility versus city. For maintenance, what was meant by maintenance in all likelihood is taking care of dead trees, landscaping, trash, not shifting waterways and erosion control. For that reason, I think that when it comes to our waterways, they should be considered infrastructure, especially because as so much concrete has been built in the past few decades, that, as we've heard, that does change how much water runs off into stream banks and how much erosion there is as a result. So, last meeting, I'm getting all choked up. But I think, I think, the, thank you. I think the future council, if, if you will take my advice into the future, is to consider all these waterways and stream banks are infrastructure. I do want to point out one last thing, and I think that's four slides further. It's the impact to the drainage fee for residential.
This one or keep going?
Uh, one more, please. I think one more. Okay. Yeah, where it shows here the, the theoretical increase for city and city parks at $3.54, we already take care of that for cities and city parks. It's just done ad hoc whenever the need arises. So even though this would be on a 20-year timetable, would there really be a necessary increase over and above what we already pay when the need arises?
Yeah, so right now, we put about $2.5 million towards erosion control projects on city-owned property or city parks property. The $3.54 would take us to $9 million a year. And so in order to do the 91 million estimate, it would take $9 million a year over a 20-year timeframe.
Okay, so if I'm hearing or interpreting that right, that means we're not even staying on top of our own erosion control needs?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So on this, you're suggesting that we would need to increase to this amount right away in order to get us to that 20-year time period? Or can you go back to the slide before? How are you suggesting we would need to get up to that? At what point?
So I don't have an answer for that right now. We could look at it. So this is the residential component that we did. Again, the middle one or the furthest one to the left is what it was prior to July of 2020. And you can see, we had incremental raises. So we could incrementally raise it. Instead of $3.54 at one time, we could do a dollar a year for some timeframe. There's multitude of different options. If we did the full 3.54 today, it would take us 20 years to address the 91 million. If we increment it, it's going to push that timeframe a little bit further. I haven't run those numbers yet. And that's where it just, there's a lot of variables that would impact that. But today, if we increased it by $3.54 today, it would take us 20 years to address it.
Okay.
The challenge that we have is going to be either rate shock and cost, but it's also going to be the time that could continue with the deterioration of those streams. So for us, it's how aggressive we want to be on the rates and on the work is going to be the.
Yeah, and, and what we've looked at from the 91, so let's say we did increase it today, and we do $9 million worth of work next year. That decreases the 91 down to 82. Now we've got a year of inflation, and we also have one more year of additional locations that have eroded, that have now fallen below that 60-point. So now that bumps it up.
But this is assuming we decide we have to do all of them that are critical, medium-down, and we're not going to use, put any of them in a bond, and we're not going to do any cost sharing. This is like worst-case scenario that we're taking it all on, right?
Yeah, we wanted to.
So, okay. So if we go back to the other slide that showed some of the, what the other cities are doing, where they said.
We're probably backwards, right?
Yeah, I think, yes. But before that, yes. So some of these cities, I do like that there is a little bit of cost sharing. And I think, to me, you would grade it out. To me, you would give the most money to the most critical projects, right? Because those have the biggest safety concern. And then as you get farther out from critical, that's where you would ask for the most cost sharing. So that would be my suggestion of how we do it. I wouldn't say, it would not be my suggestion that we say everybody's is free and we're raising the, the cost for all citizens that much. I would come up with a scale of how we determine who's getting a percentage of theirs paid for. That would be my suggestion.
All right, thank you.
All right. So I remember from the, the previous discussion that I, I believe all council members are very concerned about having this split cost for, you know, one sector of the, of our population versus another sector. We, we, I believe all council members agree that I think there is a consensus that we, we want to make sure that if there is an erosion, it needs to be fixed. And it needs to come from somewhere. And it shouldn't, it should not be all borne by the people who are living closest to it. So I, I think that's a consensus. So I actually really like what our soon-to-be former council member Prince and soon-to-be former member, council member Williams, and soon-to-be former councilman Rick Adeli said. Yes, because they, they feel like they have to put their input in right now. But I, I, I believe what they say are true. I mean, I, I like the idea of having ownership of the stream banks. I like the idea of focusing on the critical ones now and trying to make sure that we have the money to pay for that now because that's the most important. And then we deal with all the other ones later. I, I get it that the other, maybe the, the moderate or the low-risk, what is it? The high-risk may become critical at some point. But we need to deal with the critical first so that we could resolve that, and then we can deal with the other ones. But in any event, I, I believe that we should start, start our budgeting based on the critical rather than trying to level out and trying to pay for everything all at once. So that's, that's my comment.
All right, Rick?
Uh, yes. I'm somewhat torn in the fact that there are sins in the past because I walk along this particular street, along Wasslin, and a neighbor called out to me. And his property to one side has a nice Gabion. His does not, and his backyard is falling into the stream bed. Now, he has some sins on himself in that he cut away some greenery to maybe accelerate that. But the fact is, the city built that Gabion wall, and the previous owner of the property turned that offer down for some reason. That being said, it's fair, it's unfair to him for him to share that burden for the cost of a Gabion, Gabion wall to repair his property. But I think there should be some cost sharing because we all recognize that our budgets are tight. We're paying fees and taxes, and we all hate to see all our water fees go up. You know, we hate to see our electricity fees go up. But there's a cost burden here. And, and I think it's somewhat unfair to the city